Okay, it is six o'clock on Monday, March third, twenty twenty five. I'm calling to order the Rutland Select Board and Board of Public Works meeting. We are meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. We are being recorded for local access television. We're being livestreamed for local access television as well as recording for re-airing. We're also on Zoom for participation. I believe Zoom is being recorded as well for our additional social media, YouTube and the like. I will, if we can stand for the pledge, please. Um, I would, moving right into our agenda, we have minutes, Treasury warrant and payroll. Actually, we're a four-member board in person and Tom is remote on Zoom. So I'll ask, we usually do roll call for everything anyway, but I'll ask for roll call for everything. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve Treasury warrant twenty-five dash eighteen and twenty-five dash PW eighteen.
Make a motion to approve Treasury warrant twenty-five dash eighteen and twenty-five PW eighteen.
Motion and a second. Anything, questions, comments, concerns?
Nothing. Austin, excuse me, Austin, no?
Yeah, so with the most recent storm, we are now just under fifty thousand dollars in deficit for snow and ice. So just want to flag that. Hopefully, there's no more winter weather, but that deficit has climbed tremendously between wages and supplies.
No other discussion from me?
Anyone? Roll call, Harry.
Second and I.
Max and I.
Madge, I.
Yav and I.
Waitman I. Um, we have meeting minutes. It was a regular meeting from February eighteenth, twenty twenty five. I believe everyone was in attendance for this meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve.
A motion to approve February eighteen, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation, corrections, considerations? Roll call, Harry.
Second and I.
Max and I.
Madge, I.
Yav and I.
Waitman I. Thank you, Tanika. Um, we have a public hearing posted for six o'clock for an application for class two auto dealer license. Mal's Auto Sales, two oh four Barry Paxton Road. Is the applicant present? Um, I will, um, open the hearing. Um, for, this is for a class two, um, auto license over on Barry Paxton Road. Um, is there anyone here who would like to speak on it? So this business was current, was operating over there and did not submit the necessary paperwork to complete the renewal of the license in that, by the end of December. So this is, must be treated as a new license, which is why we're having a public hearing. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions or consideration?
To the chair? Is there anything that has come to our attention through the police or fire regarding the property that's there? Any complaints on that property at all?
No, none whatsoever.
Nothing, okay.
And we have in our memo that this was the same property that was the petitioner for the second retail marijuana license was petitioning for. And it, the memo says that our office has obtained written permission for Mal to continue utilizing the property for the auto business. So, um, the property owner is amenable to it also.
Follow-up question, did he say, or did the owner say why they wouldn't be able to be here or on Zoom? Is there any feedback, nothing, huh? Okay.
I think oftentimes, and I don't want to speak for this owner, but because most of the, this is essentially a renewal of an existing business. It just didn't meet the timeline. So oftentimes, for the renewals, we don't, the applicants aren't here. Um, as long as all the paperwork and documentation and fees are in, um, we move forward with it, so, um.
Yeah, that's correct, Leah. So just to add, um, Mal's has been operating there for many, many years. And at the end of the calendar year, he wasn't certain if he was going to stay here or move to another location. Based on what the property owner was considering doing with the property. Now knowing that that's not moving forward, he and Mal have come to an agreement. We do have the property owner's written permission for Mal to continue operating. But as Leah said, because he didn't renew before the end of the calendar year, we had to treat it as a brand-new application with a public hearing again.
Is there anyone from the public one last time to speak for, uh, in regards to the Mal's Auto Sales Class Two dealership license? I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, Harry.
Second and I.
Max and I.
Madge, I.
Yav and I.
Waitman I. Um, is there any other conversation for the board before we have a motion to, uh, for the license? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the application for the Class Two Auto License dealership for Mal's Auto Sales at two oh four Barry Paxton Road as presented.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Second and I.
Max and I.
Madge, I.
Yav and I.
Waitman I. Thank you. Moving into public comment, um, we have a full audience here tonight. I imagine some are for public comment and I imagine some are, um, for some of our other business. So for public comment, I need name and address, please. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Do you want me to stand up?
Um, whatever you're comfortable with, you just need your name and address, please.
Uh, Alex Moss, one nineteen Brenton. There has been a lot of construction on Brenton recently with regards to, I believe it's called Hilltop Developments, Hilltop Estates, uh, with a man named Clee Blair. And a lot of these special conditions that were laid out, that were agreed to, are not being followed. Whether it's heavy equipment rolling down from the Campbell end, whether it's closing the road at seven in the morning instead of nine o'clock, whether it's rolling the road, uh, which wasn't done before. It might have been done today, I don't know if anybody knows that. But it definitely wasn't done before. And when questioned about all of these stipulations by myself, the DPW director asked him, why would you allow this work during the time of the thaw and the muddy season? And he told me he approved it, but was never told about the work until the day before. When I again pressed him, why would you approve such work? He kept deflecting. When asked why he wasn't told about it, he blamed it on his employees. And we're trying to, I think there's a contingent of us here tonight. We're trying to get some answers as far as what can be done to help, hold this developer accountable for all the shortcomings, not only in this project, but in projects going forward. Because even though I have a short history in this town, there's a long history of, I'll try and choose my words, a parasitic relationship between the developer and the town. Whether it's developing properties that are going to cost the town money in, in taxes and all that, or whether it's promising things like on this road that he is not living up to. People in the town seem to believe he will. DPW told me he trusts him, couldn't give me a good reason why. After doubling the timeline and then adding another week to that timeline, people have daycares, people have kids in school, yes. There's lots of communities that are, lots of lives in the community that are being torn apart by this. And it seems like everyone's pointing the finger and Blair is just not communicating with anyone. And we're trying to see what we can do to get some action.
Any answers?
Thank you.
Any answers?
This is public comment, we don't really engage a lot. As you probably are aware, um, special conditions in that is really a planning board purview. As far as the DPW, um, we are the Board of Public Works, we're not DPW though. Austin, I don't know if you can speak, I know I had asked a couple of questions as far as kind of the, the outline of stuff also.
Yeah, so I plan, I can address some of these points in my town administration report if you want to continue with public comment and we can address each point as we go.
So I can just add, I'm Jay Wood Small, eighty-five Brenton. So we talked to the DPW director too, and I saw the planning board meeting on Thursday night, which was the twenty-fifth, right, last week? And at the end of the meeting, they were saying that the special conditions weren't being met. And they said, I have the video, I watched it, they said, that's not us, that's the DPW. That was basically the last of the meeting that I watched on Thursday night. So I know I've been trying to, to email you for some answers and one night you're probably getting a lot of emails and calls about this, but I just feel like we're not getting anywhere. And then here we are, five weeks, the buses aren't coming down. Okay, that's, Chris says, alright, that's not my problem, the bus. The police are telling the bus company to come down the road, but the bus company saying, nope, I'm not gonna do it. I mean, we're going on five weeks, right?
So, um.
Hold on, I can give you one.
Brian Boucher, eighty-nine Brenton. Two things I want to add. So one thing Alex didn't mention, Alex spoke to someone from the DPW as well, and they went and they rolled the road. Yet it was supposed to be the Blair's responsibility to pay for that and do all that. But instead, the DPW did it and their answer was just that, you know, we wanted to get it done for our citizens, which is great. But, you know, that's taxpayers' money going towards something that really the developer should be taking care of. And then, and then the other issue I had was, uh, so my mother-in-law is, is a caretaker for our kids, you know, occasionally. And she couldn't get up our road one day because of the muddy mess and everything that she called. And the response was, she's gotta get a better car. So, I mean, like, you know, that's, that's great and everything, it's a dirt road, I understand there's issues and everything, but, you know, I, I'm a firefighter, not in town, but I'm a firefighter. And I could tell you that I drove down that side and you wouldn't get an ambulance over on that side. So I, I think that's a, a big issue.
Right, it, it's bad timing with the thaw. I mean, it was the coldest winter we've had in seven years, you know, and the road is a mess either way. But the fact that the trucks were coming down off the Campbell when the construction started, it was non-stop. They were supposed to come off of Palmigusset onto Brenton. They all came down, and I told Chris this too, and the road just got ruined. Says, no, there's no trucks going down. We have all of our camera footage of trucks coming down, non-stop for, for the first two weeks and back and forth, all day long. I work from home, I'm that weird guy that looks out the window twenty-four seven. And I'm, it's just, yes, I am.
I'll speak up too, because I'm on the other end, sorry, I just now came in.
Name and address, please.
Sorry, Dory Pratt.
Address, please.
In Brenton. And they do, and I've been there since twenty twenty-two, I guess. And I understand the DPW does come through, they do dirt fill. Anybody knows that coming from fifty-six, the potholes that begin right at that, as soon as you turn in are atrocious and they always are like that during the spring and they do do that. But if they do switch and come from Palmigusset down and if they're not controlling the road, those ruts and those divots are already so bad that I can't go over five miles an hour coming from that side. My, again, I'm sure the trash pickup has already been discussed, but. Oh, oh, it hasn't, yeah. So also, Republic is not coming through to pick up trash or recycling for three weeks. So I, I'm on the complete opposite end of that street and we're already dealing with ruts as it is. So if they opposite side and start coming through that way, it's just gonna be just as bad. If they're not gonna step up and do what is done with plowing or whatever they need to do, then it's just gonna be a mess at the end of that road too.
The special conditions say that he's supposed to fix the road every two to three weeks or as needed, per the DPW. Regardless of this thaw and whatnot, the amount of traffic and trucks, like that road was just not meant for all that traffic.
And the better vehicle comment, I have a four by four, all over the place.
That should, that's, that's not, that's not, that's not an appropriate comment for, for a DPD dub, director to tell somebody.
I hear your frustration, I, I hear, I think we all hear it, I think some of us have experienced it also. I think Austin has some update. We are providing public comment to kind of hear your concern so that we can take it and, and continue to address it also. Planning board, some of planning board is here, we, we will have a joint meeting. I don't believe they have a quorum yet, so they're not officially open. But it, uh, the chair and vice chair are of planning board are here to hear this as well. Because a lot of the special conditions, a lot, the development piece and the special conditions are, are planning board. So, but we hear, we hear and I want to provide Austin an opportunity since you're all here to, to hear.
Yeah, so, um, I think, fully admit, I think on behalf of the town that there's a lot of challenges, I think with, one, the initial plan that we have and then also the execution of the plan from, from the developer. First and foremost, I think, um, timing, most certainly with respect to the special conditions, I think could have been better executed on, on behalf of the developer in, in communication with the, with the DPW. I think Chris will be the first one to admit, actually I had a conversation with him and the town planner this morning, that, you know, hindsight twenty twenty, he would have, and had, and known more about these special conditions, the work wouldn't have been approved for this timeframe. Also, you know, not to provide any excuses for the developer, for DPW, we also had a major snowstorm that also, of course, impacted the timeframe of the, of the project. And it, it didn't help that after the major snowstorm, we've also had a pretty significant thaw, right? Which I think as anyone who lives on Brenton recognizes that, um, that road becomes a challenge during this timeframe.
I just want to add real quick, so I was told that the, the project was not delayed was because of weather. The project got delayed because he decided that he was gonna dig up the road again and extend the piping two hundred feet that wasn't approved.
Planning board doesn't seem to know about.
I, I, I don't want to hear the, I know that there was a, a, a bout of weather, but we were told by the foreman that the project was extended because they dug up more than they were supposed to.
Yeah, well, so, and, you know, I think it probably depending on who we talk to, because that same gentleman also talked to our police lieutenant and blamed weather and cold weather for not, or cold temperatures for not. I, yeah, I, hey, I agree with all of you. I'm just gonna go through all these points, right? So, um, you know, one of the challenges, I had a, a, a meeting at the senior center on Friday and I, I spoke with, uh, with your neighbor Kurt. And, you know, he brought up kind of four overall challenges that, that, um, actually I a hundred percent agree with. The first and foremost is when we have a project like this that requires road closure, the town itself needs to know more than a couple of days before, right? For a couple of reasons. One, to be able to make sure that the developer and through our social media channels and other venues notifies the butters. It's completely unacceptable for the town to find out on the Wednesday or Thursday before road closure on Monday that this is going to take place. It's also unacceptable for us to find out and then have to call the school district and the bus company to tell them, um, that there's gonna be a road closure. Now, you know, I'll give a lot of credit obviously to Lieutenant Dan. I think he did a lot of work on Thursday and Friday to try to mitigate as much as possible the impact. You know, we tried to provide an alternative plan for the school buses, the school bus company refused. I think lesson learned, we learned that you actually should call the school district because they're in charge of the school bus company. That didn't happen, the school bus company still refused even though they were given another option. With respect to trash service, um, it's my understanding, um, there was an agreement between the contractor and the police detail to provide for, um, access for the trash haulers to access houses on, on Brenton. And, and for whatever reason, I would defer to your trash company, they've, they've refused to come down the road. So it's my understanding, some folks have one trash picked up in the month of February. Even though they were able to be provided access, I would defer to your trash hauler and, and say there's access because I, the police details have been instructed to be able to provide access for trash haulers and that's not taking place. And they'll provide a variety of reasons why, they don't want to turn around in people's driveways.
Same thing with bus companies, yes.
Same thing with bus company, right? We also recognize, and the police department will fully admit, that one detail officer is not enough. Two should, should take place, especially with the way that the closure is, is situated. It makes a challenge for one end, I think it's on, is it on the Campbell side where there's not a detail officer?
There's just a sign and so if trash shows up, they can't get around it and they don't know they can go by it or anything else like that, which.
There was an officer there in the first two weeks.
Right.
And on our side.
We should have two, right?
Oh, they're out there.
There was one at the, at the Campbell side, there was one for the first two weeks.
But I think we need two, right?
And they just sit in their car. On my side, they just sit in the car, I drop my son off at Central Tree every morning. He just sit there.
Somebody comes up.
There's nobody saying, yep, there's still room to come in. The sign is in the middle, there's no way at the trash truck, even if he wanted to turn around on fifty-six to get in. They sit in their car, not once have I seen him out waving traffic through.
I, I, and, you know, I have a couple more comments, but I think you, you know, on behalf of the police chief and the DPW director, what I think we as a town need to get better at is sometimes that means we gotta say no, you can't start. Or no, you need another police officer. I think this has been probably a good example of Rutland has been very friendly to developers, which I think hasn't been a credit to similar residents, so.
And I'm okay with that, he can build as many houses he, he wants, I'm fine with that. We all have to eat, right? But if he doesn't follow the special conditions, that's where it becomes aggravating. And I know we're just a small little road in Rutland, right? And it, it's a crappy road to begin with, but as, as long as he, he follows everything and, and the DPW follows through, I mean, there shouldn't even, we probably wouldn't even be here right now, right? I mean, it's just, you can't close a public road for five weeks out of the blue, right? With no other, again, maybe if there was a plan put in place before, said, alright, listen, bus company, we're gonna run into an issue here in a couple of weeks, let's get a plan in place so we don't leave these people hanging.
Right, no, and I agree with you, and that's why for, two business days is unacceptable.
It, it's, it's very unacceptable, yeah. I think it's kind of easy, like what we're asking for, I don't think these are like hard requests.
I agree with you, I agree with you. And, you know, I think some of the pending, and we've, I've had a conversation with the planning, um, uh, town planner, DPW director and police chief, so we've got a couple of pending projects right now that we want to make sure that the conditions are explicit enough that, um, that this doesn't happen.
Excuse me, can I make a comment here?
Yep.
Why?
Name and address, please, sorry.
Twenty-six Brenton, Deb Flanagan. Why would you allow this construction to take place in the middle of winter anyway? I mean, it was bad enough when the Palmigusset thing became such a nightmare that twenty-two buses were coming down Brenton all fall long. And now you're saying that it's okay to do construction when you don't know if there's gonna be a snowstorm, you don't know if you've got a plow, you don't know where anybody's gonna be. And historically, I've been in, on that street for well over forty years. And historically, that corner that goes around up that hill and down towards the, the low spot. In fact, when I first lived there, down by Joyce Gallic's house, that was never plowed and the kids used to ice skate there because nobody ever drove through. Warrens went out one end and the people at the other farm came out the other end, shipments did. And, I mean, it's ludicrous to think that in the middle of February, you're gonna start digging up a road that's always been lush city until May. I mean, why would you even allow that to begin with? And historically, Blair has done whatever he wanted, wherever he wanted since the beginning of time. His father started the pattern and he's just the bobblehead going along with the same pattern. He was supposed to replace all the stone walls, the whole left side from Palmigusset down to the swamp was all stone walls. I've got pictures that show it. And he was supposed to replace all those stone walls, he never did it. He was supposed to fix the people who used to live across the street, he did a bad well. He was supposed to fix it, they have since had to drill a new one. He's never fallen, gone along with fixing anything he was supposed to. The people who are up on the hill, they found out, they sued Blair because they found out that, that he, he used their yard for landfill and it's full of all sorts of stumps and stuff. He keeps pushing the lit, litigation further and further, they'll never get that cleaned out.
Well, that brings us to that word unacceptable, it makes me think of consequences. And I don't think he's had very many in this town as he continues to, to take advantage.
Can I just, on, on the question of, um, timing and why now? So I actually brought this up on, on Friday, um, right? And I, I said the same thing as you, I, I, I think it's a bad time, um, but Kurt, can I, do you mind if I call you Kurt? You made a great point, and I'm not a construction expert by, by any means, um, but he, you know, he raised the point that maybe during a, a significant freeze, it actually, it, it may be better. I don't know if that's true or not, I don't know if you're a construction expert either, um, but there's something there that, that may be true or not. There's a reason why I'm sure the developer and the contractor wanted to install the pipe at this time. I don't know the answer, and, and to be honest, that the conversation that we need to address more with the DPW director, why it would be approved for this timeframe, regardless, if it was approved, I agree with, um, with the sentiment that we should have more time to be able to execute a, a plan that's been mentioned here. So those that are impacted can be, uh, on both the residents, businesses, um, that, that, that traverse Brenton, but also the school district as well. We need more time than, than a couple of days to execute on this. I'm sorry.
I was gonna just say also, I believe in the special conditions, um, it said that they weren't supposed to do work unless it was approved. I think they weren't supposed to do work, I don't have them in front of me.
April thirtieth.
Until April thirtieth, unless it was approved. And so maybe those special conditions should just be blanket that there's no unless approved, you know, take that piece out also. Um, and to your, to everyone's point, hold the developer and, and not just, not just this developer, but all the developers a little bit more accountable because we continue as a community to subsidize all of this work. To your point, if DPW is out rolling the road when the developer is supposed to be doing that work, it's all of our tax money that's, that's subsidizing that work, um, and. Sorry.
It could be resolved.
Right, right, um, but, but to, to everyone's point, you know, I think, and, and those special conditions are again, on the planning board side of things, they're here tonight, so they'll hopefully hear that. But, um, I, I hear the sentiment that the developers in town have continued to just kind of be able to do whatever they want without any sort of accountability or enforcement or, um, anything.
Because you can see how this development's gonna go at Hilltop Estates, look how it's been run now. Can you all imagine what's gonna happen when they, when they actually start construction? I mean, are they gonna start closing down the road again? When this construction starts to happen? I mean, look at Grizzly, I mean, Grizzly's not even finished, Grizzly's a complete mess. The end of that road had like four inches on, it was completely flooded, like literally that much for weeks. I mean, that, that's the other bus stop that you want the kids to go to and they can't even get around it because the bridge is flooded. It's just nothing ever gets finished, it never gets maintained. And the same thing's gonna happen at Hilltop, we're gonna be back here, I guarantee you in a couple of months with the same complaints.
Yeah, so for active subdivisions, I would obviously make sure that, that the planning board hears your feedback. Obviously, they're here tonight, but they have regular meetings as well. So I, I think it's important to make sure that the planning board and our town planner, uh, hears that feedback and can relate to that.
I sent him a couple of emails and called him, I never heard back from him, so.
And then, um, just on the conditions of the road, um, the DPW director, especially over the past few days, has had, um, conversations with the contractor, uh, most recently my conversation with the director this morning. He has assured obviously that, uh, the gravel, um, will be completely repaired. Uh most recently, my conversation with the director this morning, um he has assured obviously that uh the gravel um will be completely repaired. Um rolling will take place several times again, um the culvert and country drainage will be repaired. Um to the satisfaction of the DPW director before we close out this project.
Lindsay Moss, one nineteen Britnall, do we have an endpoint? We were told two weeks and it keeps going on and on and on and on.
Yep, so uh we have an email from uh Clee Blair from the other day, um closing out on the seventh, Friday the seventh.
So the buses will be back on Monday.
I can't speak on behalf of the bus company, I'm not.
So how will we be alerted of that, because every Monday morning, I have to call the school to say.
Yep.
Are we running? I'm not getting any communication from the town as to what's happening with the construction.
Yeah, so you 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 won't hear communication from the town on uh the bus service, right? So um we'll make sure to be in touch with the bus company and the school district um once it's closed out, so they know um for Monday.
What about even the road closures, regardless if you if you have a kid on the bus, I go down Britnall and I never know if the roads can be closed or not. It's supposed to be a two week project.
Yeah, so um we can we can put something out on social media and we'll also make sure um to have the DPW director instruct the contractor to notify the impacted residents.
And just know, if that road's not all repaired, the bus is gonna say we're not coming down. So that'll be another week, right, they'll call and say, we can't come down that road, cuz they do it every year anyway, right? They just say, we can't come down there cuz of the ruts, and then we call and say, can you fix the road, and they come and fix the road, and then the buses come down, so.
The road wouldn't be as much of an issue if this was stuck to the two weeks, you guys make the point about construction in when it's colder. To when this project started, it was winter, and now it's mud season.
Right.
And when you do research and you look at dirt roads in New England, in Vermont, in New Hampshire, you do not do construction. The heavy trucks are ruining the condition of this road, not just for this week and next week, but permanently, forever. This is a scenic road that is getting destroyed by heavy vehicles, and it should not be allowed to continue.
One of the one of the questions and and comments that I that that I have is um the feedback about the large trucks, um it's my understanding uh from the conversation the DPW director had with the contractor for this for this particular project. The contractor is claiming that the large trucks are not his associated with this, I don't know if that's true.
We have we have them on game cameras.
Is it going to Grizzly, some of the work that's being done there, that's my question.
What do you mean by large trucks?
He has he has license plates on them, and he takes them at the construction site.
I have pictures of the excavators and then them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's excavators parked on Britnall.
And there is a whole development that he owns that he can come through.
Alright. Well, we're being told something there, I'll just say that.
Why doesn't he come through the development instead of either end of Britnall?
Agreed.
Yeah.
If he didn't make the bridge strong enough, that's not the problem with the taxpayer.
Also, but he he was given permission to go down Britnall from um from Puma Gusset.
For two weeks, for two weeks before you get into mud season, the second this entered into thaw, he should have been told you have to stop now, because you're destroying the road.
And I personally don't know if it's very effective to trust the guy who hasn't followed through with anything to get in contact with us about when he's gonna be done.
Make a call.
Like I I don't see him doing that, I see him tucking his tail and avoiding it.
We need to tell him when he's gonna be done.
Well, I live at, I'm sorry, Melissa Brown, fifty six Britnall, and I it's literally right outside my house, and there's an excavator parked outside my house. And on that like side that used to be Grizzly um extension that got closed, um excavator is like parked right out there every single day.
But is that the one that's going up and down towards Campbell Street?
I've seen it go both directions.
That's that's I think the feedback I've heard is there's large trucks that are.
Well, and there's dump trucks, that he takes all of the the dirt that he pulls up into the dump trucks and he sends that down too.
Well, and I saw the the site supervisor leave today, take his, it's a pickup truck, but it's still equipment and contractors from that job. And I watched him drive in front of my house down to Campbell, so it's it's lies.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think we have a lot of feedback and we can, you know, um I know I had talked to you last week also just to see if you can touch base with Chris and see what actually where kind of select board versus planning board versus DPW needs to step in, um because I think we're all frustrated with with that project in its entirety from the start. Um we had asked for additional documentation and we didn't, I don't know if we we didn't get it, I don't know if it was provided or not. And so um I think that we need to.
I'm I'm sorry, what documentation?
Well, just for that project as a whole, for the the sewer line extension, which sounds like.
I mean, if the planning board doesn't even have the the extension that he just did this week or or the other week, he he dug up the road and went two hundred more feet.
He shouldn't have been allowed to do it.
The planning board doesn't even didn't even approve of that, they just said, well, you know, he's probably gonna do it and just give us the new plans. I I don't see how that's acceptable.
I think we need to change, I I don't, this is.
And it's on the meeting, I watched it on the meeting, I'm not making this up.
It's. Right, I I th- and I think my frustration is the continual like let them let the developers do whatever they want and then you know, say, oh, sorry, we didn't know or we didn't want to, um it's been that way for for years. And so if we as select board, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but needs to take a harder stance to support DPW, to take that hard stance and say no, um it's okay to say no, and um you we need to look out for what's best for the entirety of town, I say this all the time, that might not be what's best for me personally, but it's what's best for the entirety of town. And I think the, you know, Jay, you said everybody needs to make a dollar and eat dinner, but it shouldn't be at the expense of everyone else. Um so. Um I'd like to wrap up this, just I feel like we're kind of s- going in circles, um name and address, please.
James Gigliano Sissa Drive, who enforces the order of conditions, whose job is that? Is there an enforcement officer?
So if it's for an active subdivision, it's the planning board.
We have no enforcement rights.
It's the planning board, right, it's an active subdivision.
Because the planning board never must go there and stop the work.
This is exactly what we've been going around.
No, you're wrong, it's the it's Harold.
How is that untrue?
Harold is the enforcement officer for the town.
But how is that?
He's the zoning enforcement officer.
Hold on, how is that untrue, you have regular subdivision updates at your planning board meetings, why would you do that if it wasn't relevant?
Well, that that you're talking about updates, you're talking enforcement, completely different discussion.
But but hold on, so but if if you have uh an active subdivision and there's violations of uh whether it's orders or special conditions. You're saying you have no teeth to do anything.
That's correct.
That doesn't seem true.
We we can. No, we we can we can send a letter to Harold to enforce it, but we have no authority.
But this has nothing to do with zoning, this is an active subdivision.
These are.
Right?
We we cannot issue a cease and desist.
Yes, correct, that's what I'm guessing.
So you you're you're telling me if a developer does it violates orders and conditions of the planning board, there's zero uh enforcement authority? That doesn't seem accurate. That doesn't seem accurate.
Then.
Harold is our building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer.
Who's Harold?
Oh, okay, thank you.
And and as you know, and as you know, Harold as the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer has um enforcement authority over structures and building. Um and particular zoning violations that occur with structures and building. Uh DPW director um and and through them, uh the Board of Public Works um has authority over water and sewer and stormwater infrastructure. Um which I think obviously we've got some some comments to talk about here, but it to me, it just it it seems who's responsible here, I don't believe it's the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer.
Great question.
That doesn't seem accurate.
The the only action.
The town planner doesn't have enforcement authority.
The only action that we can take in in a case such as this would be to hold a hearing to rescind the approval of the subdivision in this entirety.
So my question as well, and and I've watched planning board meetings where there's been uh issues with, for example, the roadway infrastructure of an act- active subdivision. And I've seen this board say, you need to get it up to standards.
Correct.
So how is that any different than what we're asking here?
Right.
You can ask the builder to follow their plan, but when it comes to telling them that something has to be done, cease and desist? Or shut them down, we don't have the authority to do that.
But but you've done.
Then who does?
What's stopping them from just doing whatever they want?
Which is what, which is what they're doing.
Well, why don't we pull out the enforcement uh document that this town has and go through all the people that have enforcement rights? That's what we need to look at before we start pointing fingers and talking between select board, DPW and planning board. We need to pull that document out and look at it and make sure we're all on the same page.
I agree with you, we can do that, but again, this um order of conditions has nothing to do with zoning. Right? So the zoning enforcement officer, and and especially when he starts building, that's when he can start doing things.
This is what we've been dealing with the past three weeks, this right here.
But this doesn't provide. This is exactly.
Nobody points fingers, now the finger pointing.
But hopefully, we can get somewhere now that we're asking the questions.
I was just gonna say, I I'm reading through MGL right now, which my comprehension while I'm listening to all of you also, is not going to be the best.
This is a.
So now I have all the MGL pulled up to to look at MGL and we can talk to Harold, Austin and John um and Chris and figure out from a staff perspective, if we need to ask legal's opinion, we ask legal's opinion, because at some point um somebody need to to everyone's point, somebody needs to be held accountable, and if that's us, then we'll do that. But we don't wanna be accused of stepping on the toes of anyone else, um that that tends to happen. And so um and if it's not us, then who who is it, right? And because then that's who you all need, we all need to petition, you all, we all, everybody needs to petition.
Just one more comment, um planning board order of approval, um after considering the information, the planning board finds that the above references in compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations. Number six of the um standard rules and regulations. Uh notwithstanding the release of any uh laws or reduction, the planning board reserves the right to require corrective work at any time until such time as the roadways and municipal services have been accepted by the town of Rutland as public ways or otherwise releases by the town of Rutland. I think that gives you the authority right there to to uh provide corrective work, like you've done with other subdivisions.
We we can do that, but we can't shut him down or tell him he can't continue any other work.
So if they but if they verbally say, you need to correct it, you need to fix this, and then he doesn't, then what?
Shutting him down.
That's.
Exactly, I've already consulted one.
But do you sue the town?
Uh the my lawyer has said you you sue all parties involved and you let them figure out who's responsible.
I just wanna make sure, and and I think all the residents and everyone agree that um we need to be able to provide accountability for uh those who aren't following a legal binding document. And um whether it's the planning board, whether it's the DPW, whether it's the police department, whether it's any responsible agency. We have the power and authority to do things, we just need to make sure that we actually use it. Um and yeah, we've got it here, so you know, I I think we can do the finger pointing, I agree with you. Um but if we find a way to work together, we all want this to come to a helpful compromise, right? And we want this project to go well, it was approved, I hope it goes well, I hope Jay wrong, um that, you know.
The writing's already on the wall.
Right. Austin, from here on forth, how do we manage it as best as possible and using, because it's still active? Cause I agree with Tamika, why do we have these anyways, why do we have subdivision control control law? Why do we uh have subdivision rules and regulations if they mean nothing to the town?
Through the chair to answer you, Austin, this, we've got a meeting coming up in a following Tuesday, this will be on the discussion point. Cause again, there's other issues involved, like said earlier, the ex sewer extension. We need to discuss that.
There's nothing you can do about it now, he just went ahead and did it.
But 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 the road needs to be repaired, that costs money. He 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 needs to address this, even if he can't eh the work is done, from a financial standpoint, he can be held accountable. The town should not be making the repairs. The financial hardships that people are going through with businesses and schools and buses because of this extended work, the work might be done, but there's still repairs to be made.
Tommy, see if you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just had a question, so who's responsible for inspecting the water and sewer pipes that go into the road?
DPW. DPW.
Okay, so we know that that wasn't done. So not only for the extension, but the water and sewer pipes that were put down the access road connecting Grizzly? They just went ahead and did that, so we don't, that's never been formally inspected past anything. So it there's gotta be something we can do, that at the very least, they have to dig it up and and get it inspected.
Yeah, Tom, I I think I I hate to say this, but I think that's been accepted by the town already, is that right? Not that fortunate, no, but what about access road?
No, nope.
No, okay, good, nevermind, scratch that. Um.
I think, I think, go ahead.
What, has the pump station?
Pump station's approved.
It's been approved by the town?
Pump station's been approved.
Station's been approved, as far as I know.
So um we've got an extensive amount of rules and regulations and and you know, I I think it's fair to say that um on our sewer rules and regulations, the town has been done a poor job of enforcing them and actually following them. Um and making sure that developers follow them, that's something that I brought up to the town planner as well and DPW director. There's, if you look through our rules and regulations, there's a lot of things that the town and developers should have done that haven't been done. I can't fix the past, unfortunately, there's a lot of subdivisions that have taken place over over decades that unfortunately now the town is responsible for and the ratepayers are responsible for. Um but it's our commitment to to make sure that that we follow these um in the future, um for current projects and future subdivisions as well.
Thank you, um and so I appreciate you all showing up and kind of voicing everything in the same room, so we're all hearing the same information. Um we have some work that we'll do on our end, um planning board will meet next Tuesday, not tomorrow, but the following Tuesday. Um and I'm sure the conversation will continue there as well. Um Austin, as we kind of get answers and everything, if we can try to keep the the impacted residents, especially for the busing and the trash and everything um notified, I don't know if we can do reverse nine one ones just for certain addresses. Um maybe a reverse nine one one for those addresses or or whatever would be, um
Yep.
You know, even if it's just all Britnall or something.
Yep.
Um.
Okay.
Thank you. Tom, do you still, do you have another comment, I see your hand, or is it still just up?
Yeah, again, I don't wanna drag this on, but I i- if there isn't some type of punishment in place for these violations, then it's all a joke.
Yep.
This company has been doing this for decades, and I keep hearing planning board and nothing ever happens.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you, Tom. And I think, thank you, Tom, I think that that's kind of where we're trying to delineate what we as select board and Board of Public Works can can do, so. Thank you. Um this is public comment.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Peter Payer, Sir, Twenty Highland Park Road, Chair, Historical Commission. I'm just kind of walking into this, um but I do understand we're uh discussing Britnall Drive and some work being done on that road. Uh from my understanding, if I remember correctly, that's a scenic road and historical commission has not been informed of any work being done on that road.
Yikes. I wouldn't see it.
Thank you for your input, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um is there any other public comment for the Britnall Road concerns or any other public comments?
We appreciate your help, I I mean, I I don't wanna have to be here squawking about this, and I I appreciate your work, Austin, I appreciate the DPW, I appreciate the selectmen and and the planning board. But it it seems like this project is coming to a head for Rutland and it's I I hate to say it, but I just know how this is gonna go, just for them putting the pipes in, they're gonna put in nine more houses. And it's just, it it's just gonna be the same old song and dance, so I've said my piece, so thank you for trying to help us out. And the worst part about this is, you ever had to drive your kids to the high school?
Good morning for six weeks.
The worst place, it's hell on earth.
I pick I pick the drive to Bay Path over
Well, yeah.
Twenty five mile drive to Bay Path over the five mile drive to Washington. Alright, thank you, I I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
I'm just gonna ask public comment if you can kind of move out and we have a meeting to keep running, um we have, I wanna kind of, we have a couple of quick, I'm hopeful, quick items, um is uh Cheryl Rao here? We have board and committee appointments and resignations.
Thank you.
Thank you, um so we have a council on aging appointment, we have a letter of interest and a recommendation for Cheryl Rao, am I pronouncing your last?
Yes, you are, yep.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Um so we have your application or your letter. Um, so we have your application or your letter of interest and um uh the recommendation from um the Chair of the Council on Aging. Um, I, do you, do you wanna introduce yourself and you you're here and I appreciate that?
Sure, um, my name is Cheryl Rao and I've lived in Rutland for thirty-seven years and I'm excited to be on the Council on Aging Board.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, does anyone have any questions um for Cheryl?
Through the chair. I have a question for Nancy. Um, you wrote a letter of recommendation. Why would you feel Cheryl's good for you?
Uh, um, well, she's been wonderful, actually, she has um supported the center, come to meetings and she's taken a great interest in providing or adding to our pantry. So now because of Cheryl, um, we can provide some perishable items and she also donated a refrigerator to store those perishable items. She's offered to deliver them if people need that assistance, so um and she's just taken an interest in the people there and.
Thank you. Does anyone have a, any other board member have questions or anything for Cheryl? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Cheryl Rao to the Council on Aging.
Second motion.
I think it's a three-year term.
Uh, with term expiration of twenty twenty-seven.
Term expiration of twenty twenty-seven.
We have a motion and a second, is there any conversation? Roll call, Harry.
Sec, man, I.
Matt's an I.
Calvin, I.
White man, I. Thank you, um, you'll need to stop in um the town clerk's office and get sworn in before you can participate uh officially participate in any of the meetings.
Okay.
Um, it's a quick, you know, um, pop in whenever they have hours and if it doesn't work, then email Anita or Ben and they often are able to work around a schedule.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have an alternate delegate to CMRPC, we have two letters of interest for consideration. Um, CMRPC is uh our Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Um, we, planning board has one delegate that they appoint, select board has one delegate that they appoint, um, those are full member delegates. And then the select board is responsible for appointing an alternate member. Um, currently, I don't believe any of the delegates have been attending the quarterly meetings or the legislative meetings or anything, um, which is a detriment to town because we get um credit for planning hours for uh participation in those meetings, as well as a say in what the budget is, um, the the assessment to the member towns um and just the conversation. I try to attend the meetings more of an as an interested individual than a a town representative as much as I can, um, but I can't always make them. So by appointing an alternate member, um, the hope would be the alternate member can attend as much as possible, the alternate alternate member then would receive credit um for those hours as well. Um, we are eligible for, uh, because we have a two full member delegates, we're eligible for, I believe, two hours per um quarterly meeting and two, a one hour per quarterly meeting and one hour per legislative meeting, um, becau- if both of our, is it one hour per delegate?
It's a one hour per town per meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we are, would be eligible for uh some increased technical service hours through CMRPC, um, if we had um representation there. Um, so we have, uh, because this is not a town committee, this is a outside commission, we don't have letters of recommendations from chairs or anyone of that nature, it's simply our purview to appoint the individuals. Um, we have two applicants, um, we have uh Mr. Mike Pantos Junior and Ms. Jean Sigliano. I believe both individuals are here tonight, thank you for attending, um, if you wanna stand up and introduce yourself and say a little blurb, um, and then if we have any questions. Mike, do you wanna go?
Hi, uh, good evening, I'm Mike Pantos Junior, Thirty Two Palmacusa Road. Uh, I was interested because I've seen that this uh alternative delegate role was open for several months and I think it needs to be filled. And I'm interested in uh the purview of that, uh, not sure if you would call it a boarder commission, but um, I'm interested in that role. And it's a time commitment that I can commit to and uh, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, Jean Sigliano, I'm interested in the position because um I've been here two years, I got involved with the event committee, I'm Chair of that. And I'm looking to do something that has more of an impact on the town and I see, I was involved in planning and zoning and conservation boards back where I came from. And they operated very differently than here and I'm trying to understand why it is the way it is and I thought through CMRPC there's lots of classes and things you can take, um, which would give credit to the town and then I might gain the knowledge to help improve the situation here.
Thank you. Um, does anyone, so um, just for the board's knowledge, there's quarterly meetings that are once a quarter. Um, and legislative meetings that I believe are roughly once every couple of months. I think, I think it depends if there's anything big going on, um, and then there's obviously additional learning opportunities or special events or um, anything of that nature, um, as well, just for the board's knowledge. Um, Cheryl, I don't know if you have anything that you wanna speak to specifically about CMRPC, um, but I don't wanna put you on the spot, so I think I covered the gist of it.
The next quarterly meeting's on March thirteenth and the annual meeting is in June.
Yeah. Thank you. Um.
Question, are we filling a vacancy here?
Yes.
Cause I see the expiration is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So your annual seats, um, so this term would expire on June thirtieth and then that same individual could come forward and express their interest in being reappointed if they wanted to.
Okay.
And there was some back and forth as to who's responsible for appointing the alternate, whether it was planning board or whether it was select board and it's select board um that's responsible and so in an attempt to try to fill and get a couple of hours to finish out this twenty twenty fi- uh twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Um, we're looking for this appointment. I had reached out to our um other delegates, um, and never heard back if they were interested in continuing just because um they haven't attended, so. Um, does anyone have any questions for Jean or Mike?
Yeah, through the chair.
Sure.
Um. I might have some questions, uh, but I don't tonight and I'm wondering and forgive me, but I'm wondering if we should go into an executive or sub session to discuss this, cause there are things that I would like to ask that I may not know about deciding which one of those to pick.
I, Mike, I'm sure, like, my question would be, I'm not sure if any of the executive session privileges qualify for a boarder committee appointment like this. We'd have to, I'd have to quickly check on that, but I don't believe any of them qualify for this.
Um, I will say also, this is not, it's uh more of a participation, it's not a an actual uh strong decision-making, it's a participation similar to where river advisory committee or something, um, that we appoint similar to those. Um, it's a multi-member town and city commission. Um, and it's really just making sure that we have some sort of Rutland representation at at these meetings. Um, like I said, they uh talked about, um, at one of the meetings, one of the, I think it was one of the legislative meetings um or subcommittee meetings, talked about the the fee assessments and everything to the member towns. Um, and we, I just happened to be on a call, but I wasn't participating in the meeting and learned what our assessment was, but it wasn't, um, so again, it's not, um, that we have a whole lot of weight in it because most of it's set through a formula, but it's just to at least have representation and and hear, um. Also some communication as far as what grants or focus on grants or um technical services might be available, um, it's another set of eyes. Um, you know, I think John and Austin get a lot, um, but by all means, we we want community representation also. Um, the, my plan was to appoint someone tonight so that they could be sworn in and hopefully make the um annual meeting next week on Thursday. It's a tough meeting night for us, we have the school budget meetings, roundtables that night, um, and I have a prior commitment anyway. Um, so uh Austin and um won't be able to attend either, so that that was part of my hope. Um, they, we were hoping to do this appointment in February, but I think there were conflicts with both um applicants for meetings and we wanted to be fair and provide an opportunity for both applicants to be present to speak to their to their interest. Um, I think both applicants are qualified, so um I would entertain a motion if no one has any other specific questions for for Jean or or um Mike, I just, I think, Mike, you and Jean both kind of mentioned that you feel like the time commitments you're able to make, um, they do have Zoom sometimes.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Um, but it's just, we don't know what's happening with Zoom through the end of March and everything also, so.
I'm very comfortable with Zoom, I run Zoom meetings myself, so.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, that's not a guarantee that we'll be able to, but not all their meetings are via Zoom either, um, and we don't know what will con- if that'll continue through after March or not.
I do have a question.
Sure.
What do you hope to get out of CMRPC for the town? I know you wanna serve it, but what are you looking for to get out of it for the town?
I'm looking to see the best practices in Massachusetts for planning and zoning, um, and bring some of that information back. Um, see how things are done in other towns compared to how they're done here. I think a lot of the problems here with um taxes have to do with the way things have been zoned and passed. And we have much, much residential development that has gone through without uh comparable business and uh retail establishments. And I think the way things are zoned affects that. And I'd just like to see what CMRPC has to say about that since they're regional planning.
Thank you.
My hope would be to establish more uh back and forth communication with the town, um, to have somebody actually, preferably myself there at the meetings and specifically get communication back and forth because I believe the DOT is involved with that group. Um, and I know there's things like we have the roundabout that's gonna be coming into Rutland in a few years, we have the roundabout that's under construction in Holden, that sort of thing, the things that impact all of our commute.
Can we draw straws?
I I will say that I I'm hopeful that whomever is not appointed tonight would contin- would consider being, putting in for in June for um, the the next round of appointments. Do we have a motion?
I I I'll I'll make a motion and no, nothing, nothing personally here again, um, but I I'll say, given um Jean's statements um regarding planning and zoning and and all of that, um, and her prior experience with that, I will make a motion to appoint Jean Sigliano um to as alternate delegate to CMRPC. As representative of the select board for one year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, got nothing.
We have a motion, is there a second? I will second for conversation, I feel like no one was making a motion, so I'm not sure why there's not a second. Um, like I said, I I think both are are very qualified and I appreciate both both of your enthusiasms. Um, and no matter what, I hope that whomever is is appointed as an alternate comes back for reappointment and whoever is not appointed um comes back for uh for a full consideration, um, because like I said, select board has um a full appointment as well as the alternate appointment, so um, I think it's not anything, you know, I think on, I'd be happy with both of you.
I I am, I think from for myself as a board member, I'm happy that we have a difficult decision to make here and both good qualified candidates are here, so I thank you for that, we appreciate it.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any, um, for, to appoint Jean as alternate to finish out the the fiscal year, um, is there any other conversation? And we lost Tom, I knew he had said he could probably only stay on until seven.
Yep, he left at six fifty-eight.
Yeah, so, okay, um, hearing none, roll call, Harry?
Can I have a couple of days? Um. My own, my own feeling is who I feel might be best is qualifications, I think, on both sides, and I have to vote May for Jean.
Huh?
Okay. Um, yes, we are faced with a a decision, um, something that we haven't seen anything really like, um, in recent history and so okay, you know, I would at this point in time say, um, all right, we picked a candidate and would support the candidate and I would uh say aye.
Ledry, white man, I, thank you, and Mike, it's not anything personal at all.
Calvin, that. Calvin, no problem.
I I, like I said, I had reached out to the previous, the uh full delegates about a month and a half ago when this first came through to see if they were interested in continuing to serve just because, not not even knowing who, if we would have any applicants for the alternate or not, and I never heard back, so um, I appreciate your willingness, um, and I'm not sure if the meetings can be open to non-delegates, but we can try to get you on an email list if you're interested, just
I would appreciate that.
to to keep in the loop and and start the learning, if that's.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, um, and Jean, I think you still have to get sworn in, um, I believe you have to get sworn in for town, um, at through the clerk's office, similar to everything else, but this would just be as the CMRPC alternate member.
Okay, I'll just stop and sit here tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you, name and address, sorry.
More open white, Turkey Hill Road, uh, if you have a delegate that has not responded, are you in a position to be able to remove that delegate and put in somebody that wants to be doing it?
So these are yearly appointments, um, and
But wasn't like five meetings and you don't
So we
I.
But because these are quarterly meetings and it's not a town committee meeting, it's a, it's a outside, you know, it's uh some of that gray area um as far as as how that goes, um, so, thank you.
Lee, can I ask? Lee, I'll answer your question, I'll be there March thirteenth, fortunately, January, I was tied up with emergency with Eversource, so I couldn't make it, I will be there on January thirteenth.
Okay.
Just wanna let that, cause I hear the roundtable, you appointed me, I'm answering the question right here.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, awesome, moving in, um.
Chair, can I do my update before people leave?
Yes. Yeah.
All right, I'll I'll be brief, this is the most amount of people I can do a town administrator report for. So I'm kind of excited, um, I'll try to be very quick, um, so just to roll through a couple of points. Um, there's been a couple of nights over the past few weeks where I haven't slept that great, so I've been working on um, this budget portal, uh, I'll now consider it live, I also rebranded it, I asked ChatGPT for a couple of different names and I came up with Rubrik, I thought it was kind of interesting. It's a little long, uh, but I'm working on it. Um, so it stands for Rutland Unified Budget Review and Information Center, again, that's a lot. Um, but I've been working on this to try to add a little bit more information, um, I think when I presented to the board last, we just had this overview page, revenues and expenses. I've now added a reserves page which shows our reserve balances for free cash, our stabilization and our trust funds, um, all the way back to twenty ten. Um, a capital improvement plan, uh, since FY nineteen, you can also sort these projects by department, funding source. Um, and you can see the detail of the projects all the way back to FY nineteen. I've also incorporated a condensed uh version of our multi-year financial forecast based off of um our current town administrator's proposed budget. Once the board adopts a a budget, I'll revise this model and it will then um account for the rest of the the model. Um, and then finally, this is something I I actually spent a lot of time, um, benchmarking um against other comparable communities, so uh, there are eighteen other communities that are benchmarked against us, um, there's a list of indicators uh that I've selected uh based off of um, the Department of Revenue statistics, um, so property values, expenses, population, average single-family tax bill. Uh, you can compare Rutland um against other Uh, you can compare Rutland um against other comparable communities, and what we've considered comparable is uh. Generally, central Massachusetts towns between five and fifteen thousand with a rural designation, um, which means that we're five hundred residents or less, uh, oh, five hundred residents or less per square mile. Um, so it's a lot of in- interesting information that will be easily maintainable in the future, I think it's a good tool for the residents to access, again, it's the same link, budget dot Rutland MA dot gov. Um, I'm excited about it, there's a lot more to do here, but I think it'll, it's a good tool for the community. Um, I'd wanna congratulate uh Council on Aging Director Nancy Nichols for receiving an additional fifty thousand dollar grant from Mass DOT's Community Transit. Uh, grant program, this grant program requires no local match for us. Uh, and the funds will be used to continue the transportation program that we launched uh last year with the same grant funding program. Um, if if there's any questions, but uh Nancy, I think has done a great job getting the program up and running, and I think it's. Running very well and providing access for residents to medical appointments, grocery shopping, things like that, sure, Harry, got a question?
Yeah, can I ask you a question after we're through here about that? Okay, thank you.
Great, um, I'll take this down cuz that's a lot of. I am notifying the board of my intent to engage the services of Good Energy, which is a consulting firm that specializes in municipal community energy aggregation services. Uh, this is something that previous boards, it was a goal of previous boards, um, to consider uh municipal uh energy aggregation for a community. Um, I'll be very brief in in defining what that means, but essentially on your uh national grid bill, you have, you have a lot of different charges there, but two of the main ones are supply and delivery. Uh, what a municipal aggregation plan and program does is actually the community identifies a um better rate for the supply services for residents. And oftentimes, it at it's at a substantially um lower rate for residents, so, um, it's not the highest part of your bill, but it's a part of your bill that. Um, the town can go into a bulk purchasing agreement and um acquire and procure lower rates for residents. Um, one of the first things that we have to do is accept statutes at town meetings, so it will it will be my intent to request the board to include warrant language. On the upcoming annual town meeting warrant, um, which then starts the process of, uh, we then have to develop a municipal aggregation plan for residents, which has to be approved by the Department of Public Utilities. Um, my reason for choosing Good Energy, um, I've, you know, done some research, uh, had a meeting with representatives. Um, there's a lot of of providers out there and consultants out there that provide services, Good Energy um has a great reputation, they work with many communities in the Commonwealth. Um, one of the things that's most important for a program like this is customer service, because there's gonna be a lot of questions from residents about what does this mean? Um, they are well known for their customer service, they um will manage the program from here on out. Um, once we engage the services, so they'll help us develop the plan, they'll do all of the management uh and development of the plan. And provide extensive public feedback for residents, um, so, something that I think will be a win for the community. Um, one of the things that, and there'll be many questions about this, but this is an opt-out program, so everyone in the community is automa- automatically opted in. Um, if you happen to have already negotiated a lower supply rate, you still will have to opt out, so you wanna make sure, and this will be on the public outreach, but. If the rate that is negotiated by the town is higher than your already pre-negotiated rate, we wanna make sure that you have adequate opportunity to opt out of the program. Um, there'll be a lot of questions over the next few months and years about this, but I just wanted to notify the board that I I do plan on moving forward with this. Um, and again, we'll talk about um a town meeting warrant, we'll also have representatives from Good Energy come to a select board meeting and speak to you and answer your questions as well.
Thank you, thank you, Austin, Carol, I think that this was one of the items when we were on the board together that we had talked about trying to find ways, so.
Sure.
Things move slow in municipal government, but we're getting there, thank you, Austin.
Sure.
Question? Now, this isn't just for the citizens, this is for the town use as well, right?
Okay, yeah.
Those rates are correct.
Correct, yeah, everyone who has an electricity bill in Rutland will be subject to this.
So we could save a lot of money for the town.
Yeah, and I just, you know, I don't wanna make it sound like we're gonna save people thousands or hundreds of dollars, you know, it is pennies, um, but it adds up, right? And especially where I think we're seeing a lot of news articles about high utility rates, if the town can do something to to lower those costs. Um, and burdens for people, I think it's important for us to do it, and we wouldn't be the first one, there's, um, actually now, I think hundreds of communities in the Commonwealth that have done this. Um, and I'm glad that we're finally moving forward. Uh, as the chair mentioned, just a few more updates, chair mentioned, we'll be uh starting our budget presentations on Wednesday and Thursday of this week, beginning at six o'clock on Wednesday and six o'clock on Thursday. Um, we have a schedule uh with town departments respectively on each of those days, um, so wanna encourage the public to uh pay attention to those meetings and then.
Um, sorry, I I just wanna add, if I may.
Sure.
The schools, WRC and Bay Path are not part of the this upcoming Wednesday and Thursday, they're next week, Thursday the thirteenth. Um, and both school districts will be in attendance at that meeting, correct?
Correct, correct. Um, and just on the budget, all of the information from both school districts and the town are posted on our, not on this fancy cool portal, um, sorry. Um, but on our um budget and financial information uh website, there's a button on the front page where you can see all of the documentation from Massachusetts, Bay Path and the town. Um, and then finally, remote meetings were mentioned earlier, um, current authorizations for remote meetings or um for remote public meetings are set to expire at the end of this month. Um, so, the Mass Municipal Association um has tried to encourage the legislature um to extend these permanently. For whatever reason, over the past few years, they've just been temporarily extended, I think there's a lot of momentum from communities to permanently extend that, but I just wanna uh note that the. Uh, MMA Mass Municipal is asking for select boards, public officials, uh, residents to contact the legislative delegation. Um, and, well, the state legislature altogether to continue um advocacy to support making these permanent, I think it'll happen. Um, but we're getting close, it's already March third and, um, you know, if we. Do not have the ability to continue, we'll have to definitely significantly modify the way that we operate a lot of our board and commissions meetings, so I just wanna put that on the community's radar as well. And happy to answer any questions, board may have.
So, on this, the state says, we're through, you don't do it anymore, and it's not an option if we wanna continue it.
So, um, the only option will go back to the initial um CMRs that that, um, a majority of the board will still have to be in person. You can have, for example, Tom, um, so how actually how we operate tonight would still be allowed. Um, but a majority of the board, for example, could not be, we couldn't have a whole board meeting ritual based off of the previous regulations.
And I believe that the ch- the officers, the chair, the chair, whoever's running the meeting, the chair needs to be in person.
The chair needs to be present. Yes.
Um.
Yeah.
So, it's how it was previously, to your point, Austin, but, um, and I think in Rutland, we are pretty good about doing hybrid, um, most of our boards and committees prefer to meet in person, we do have a few that. Are virtual only for for various reasons, um, it's not on our agenda, but because it's in the TA update, if the board is amenable to adding it, we can add a. A motion to s- to send a letter of support to to our legisla- to the state legislature to, um. Maintain it um indefinitely as an option, um, like I said, it providing it as an option then allows the communities to kind of make that decision how they wanna run it, it's not a has to be. Um, we can think about that for a couple of minutes, does anybody, Harry, I think you had a couple of questions for Nancy, um.
No, it's it's something I can, it just had to do with that grant, and does that cover the driver, the the bus, all that stuff, it covers everything?
All of the operations.
All the operating, okay, okay.
Um, thank you, thank you, Nancy, for the work on that, um, just for the community, if there's individuals that are looking to utilize the bus service, but maybe aren't super familiar with the. The senior center and council on aging, they call the, they call the council on aging to to.
Yes, cuz we have a dispatch person that works that, she doesn't work full-time, but.
Book it and. Okay, and it's through, they would call the council on aging, alright, just, I wanted to put it out there for the public because I know that it's a.
Yeah. Yes.
A not a brand-new service, but a newer service that might be of interest to individuals that aren't utilizing the other aspects of the of the center, so, thank you. Um, does anyone have any other questions or comments for Austin and his update? Is the board interested and amenable to adding a motion to uh provide a letter of support for, um, extending the. Uh, state hybrid open meeting law, um, indefinitely. As the MMA and a lot of communities are are advocating for, like I said, it's not, it doesn't mean that we have to do it, it just continues to allow us to operate as we have been. Um, for the, since COVID, really.
Do you need a motion on that?
I think it would be nice to have a motion to add it to 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 add it, and then a a motion of to send a letter of support because it would be coming from from the board.
Did you get down what you said, Tamika? I moved to what she said, so.
Alright.
You moved to, okay.
Harry did the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any conversation? Roll call Harry.
Second man, aye.
Aye, it's a aye.
Let's draw aye.
Wait, man, aye, thank you, Tamika, is that satisfied adding it and taking care of the letter of support, and then if you can do. I think we probably have something similar that we had sent maybe a couple of years ago. And then, um.
Would you prefer to have your wet signatures on it or electronic signatures? Do you have a preference? Maybe.
Okay.
Um, I mean, if you can.
It's just, that's fine.
It doesn't matter.
Cuz if you want, I can, I can have it ready if the board members just wanna stop up at their convenience and sign it.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, anything else for Austin? Austin, thank you for all the work on the budget stuff, I appreciate that, and I think the information there is really helpful and interesting, and I encourage everyone to. To look at it, um, and really play around with it and better understand kind of where we are as a community and in comparison to our our neighboring communities. Thank you, bless you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Um, if the board, I just very quickly have a couple, um, comments and updates, because we had advertised that we were going to do Moses Howe and. The uh town report, um, awards tonight, we pushed that off, not realizing that we were gonna have such a robust public comment about Britonall that was almost an hour long. But also knowing that we wanted to spend a a ch- a good chunk of time on the budget, um, so we will do those, um, notifications at our next meeting, um, I believe it's March. Seventeenth is in my head, um, and so I apologize if anyone was here for for that, um, I know the events committee has their community, um.
Expo.
Expo, thank you, Jean, um, their community expo coming up the end of the month, um, I believe it's March twenty eighth, um, twenty.
Thirtieth. Thirtieth.
Thirtieth, sorry, um, it's a Saturday, I know that.
Sunday. It's a Sunday, Sunday.
I'm failing, Jean, I'm failing.
Sunday, March thirtieth, eleven thirty to three P M.
Perfect, here.
Here.
Yes.
Outside and inside.
Thank you, and it's open to town.
Okay. Town committees, volunteer committees, town staff, not businesses, we've had several businesses try to register, we don't have the capacity, that's a different event.
Okay.
Um, so we're hoping we, I have thirty applications, but there are some of them are not appropriate and have been told so.
Okay, thank you, um, I don't, we, I don't know that select board last year ha- officially had a table. Um, it might be nice this year to officially have a table, especially knowing what the budget stuff and everything might be looking like, I cannot commit to attending that weekend, it's a dance comp weekend, so. Um, I personally, if I'm in town, I will be there, um, but I might be playing Dance Mom that weekend, I'm not one hundred percent sure, um. So we can have that conversation, but I think at very minimum, having information available for for the public would be, um. Good option, um, that's all I have for my, I wanna keep my update very brief, I'm sorry if I missed anything, um. Moving in, does, do any other members have any comments or um announcements or anything?
Um, I just wanna make something, um, about the EDC meeting that I was to and to see. Um, just to let you know that I think it's on the agenda for the seventeenth.
Correct.
Um, about the issue, and I was hoping to get it on for this one, but I ran out of time, in terms of. Them looking at taking over the sign policy and. And understanding how the cash flow works for something like that where municipal finance is concerned. So that, I wanna bring that before you do, before we mention it, so, I just wanna make sure we have that available. That night.
Thank you, and I think Austin is looking into some different options as well for that as well, I know it was a conversation we had originally, um, and so to circle back to it. Um, thank you, thank you, Harry, um, any other comments or announcements? Um, hearing none, if the board is amenable to, I'm hoping it's a fairly quick appointment to move, um, the, take the associate planning board member out of order. That's an appointment, planning board is here, I think you have a call, there's three of you here, um, if you wanna open, this is a joint appointment, um, if the board, if the board recalls, it's per the new bylaw. Um, that it's a joint appointment, that kind of planning board makes the recommendation, um, and then it's a joint appointment between planning and select board.
Okay, and when called to order, the March third, uh, meeting of the. Seventeen, seven twenty five.
Thank you, um, and I believe Alex, you are here.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you want to just stand and introduce yourself briefly, and you don't have to stand, sorry, I'm.
I don't mind. My name's Alex Moss, uh, moved to town about a year ago. Uh, I was in construction for about fifteen years, uh, Marine Corps, done some current training, all that kind of stuff. Um, worked for the state now, helping other veterans in legal situations, um, been in recovery for four years, so that's a big part of what I do for the state. Um, big part of who I am is taking charge, not taking charge of community, but, uh, being an active part in your community and standing up, uh, for what you believe is is right. Um, especially when, uh, people seem like they're being bullies, um, so that's why I wanted to get involved with the town planning board.
Thank you, and I just want wanna make a note, I believe on your application, it says conservation commission, I believe that's because we didn't have a spot for the actual, um, is that. True, that we didn't have a spot for the actual, um, alternate delegate?
That's my fault, I met the gentleman a couple of weeks ago and he asked to get involved, and I looked on our volunteer opportunities and I said, it looks like we have Concom Associate Planning Board Member. And the next day, I think he applied for everything.
Okay.
We'll we'll share joint responsibility.
That's, I just wanted to make sure, I I I was on the planning board meeting or was watching some of the planning board meeting that you were at in attendance to have that conversation, so I. Know that you know what you're getting into, but I just wanted for our clarification, so also.
I'm enthusiastic, but maybe maybe you gotta temper it.
And well, and I appreciate your enthusiasm and your willingness, um, to to be involved, um, and I think, um, I I love seeing new names and and faces and everything, so. So, thank you, um, we had, I believe, planning board, you met with him, um, Alex at your previous meeting, um, last week, and I. Think it was a a favorable conversation, um, I don't wanna, if you wanna speak to it at all, Norm?
Yes, it was.
Um, does anyone on airboard have any questions for Alex, um, or for planning board, but I would think more for Alex specifically?
I do.
Sure.
Alex, you chose the planning board, what fascinated or drew you to that particular board? I know you're in construction, so you told me that, but I'm trying to get a little bit more.
Personally. Um, personally, uh, when I actually got sober, getting outside and being in nature was very, uh, positive for me. Um, and I think that the resources of the town, when it comes to natural resources, are immense, and I find that. Don't think that they're always being protected, and I feel that the planning board is a great place to go about enacting some change. In that way, cuz I've heard a lot of people talk about it and I wanna be a voice for those people.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you're you're certainly not gonna find better mentors than you have on the board right now. Um, does the planning board, can you give me an idea of why you wrote that record, uh, letter of recommendation? What did you find interesting about Alex that you thought you'd make a good alternate on the board?
Uh, I guess, I just have to say in particular, you know, his kind of enthusiasm, uh. Four for, uh, even though apparently, you know, relatively new resident, I'm not saying he seems to be, you know, relatively positive about, uh. You know, what 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 it is or what what you think.
Was the whole board in agreement?
I believe so.
Yeah, everybody, Dick Williams wasn't there to voice his opinion, but all four was, if I remember the four-o vote, if I remember correctly.
Great, great.
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else on the board have any questions or comments for Alex or for planning or planning, do you have any other additional questions for Alex, I know you kind of. Um, does anyone else on the board have any questions or comments for Alex or for planning or planning? Do you have any other additional questions for Alex? I know you kind of.
Um, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say thank you and I think even being new to town kind of gives you good opportunity, fresh perspectives. You don't, I'm newer to, I mean, I say newer to town, I've been here for ten years now, but you know, there's a lot of people that have been here for a very long time and I've frequently advocated for, just because we always did it this way, doesn't mean we should continue doing it this way. So um seeing new people, fresh faces, bringing in new perspectives, I appreciate it. So thank you.
Can I say something? Ask his wife.
Sure.
Name and address, well, name please, we have it.
Lindsay Moss, one nineteen Brittenall, just partly about him, but more about the town. We come from the greater Boston area suburbs and I was terrified to move to a rural town. I did not want to do it. Um, Alex drove through here and felt that there was something magical about this town and I decided to let him take the wheels on that and see if, and he promised me if I hated it, we could leave and you guys all, every, I mean, everybody in this room, but everybody in this whole town was so welcoming to us as new people that it made it so easy for us to to want to get involved. Um, it's a really special community here and he wants to get involved and and keep it that way.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
I don't regret, we're not leaving. I don't regret it. He wins, he's right.
You have it on video now too.
Yeah, I know. I pulled my phone and I have to say, yeah.
Um.
Agreeing with your statement about the resources in the town needing needing watching and so on and so forth, yes. Being a longtime resident of the town, I I concur a hundred percent with what what you said, so best of luck to you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
So I would entertain a mo- if no one has any other conversation or questions, I would entertain a motion um to appoint Alexander M- Mouse, M- Moss?
Moss.
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 As an associate planning board member for a term of three years.
So moved.
Moved by the chair of planning. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Harry. Any other conversation? And this will be a full um planning board and select board vote. So um we can do roll call planning. Do you wanna start?
Yeah.
Keith?
I.
Tim?
I.
Anderson, I.
Sorry.
Second man I.
Madison, I.
I draw.
Whitman, I. Thank you very much. Thank you and thank you for coming and voicing your concerns also with Brittenall. It's way to get involved, right?
Thank you.
So thank you and welcome. Um, you'll need to stop in the town clerk's office to get sworn in. Um, Ben or Anita can swear you in. Um, their hours are eight to four?
Thirty.
Eight to four thirty um Monday through Thursday.
I'll be there.
Um, so and like I said, if you can't find the time, just send them an email and they're pretty amenable to working with schedules, so. Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And Mink too, I'm so excited that Mink comes along.
Awesome. Um, okay, moving on. Thank you for that, moving that. Um, we have a joint meeting, um.
Oh, should planning board close their meeting?
Oh, sorry, do you, planning board, would you like?
Do you wanna close your meeting, Norm?
Pardon?
Do you wanna close your meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Circle.
Any discussion? Uh, Keith?
I.
Tim?
I.
Anderson, I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One very, before before the planning board leaves, just as a potential agenda item for you, um, there was conversation about asking, Tom had to leave, but was going to ask for the wood studio piece, which we will open with historic in a minute. If there's a way to subdivide that lot to take um the wood studio, some of that acreage off, if there's a way to do that.
Is that town property? Yeah.
Yes. Anita? Subdivide town property.
That's what I don't know.
Didn't you do that with the Heights property?
We did it at the Heights.
What's that?
You did it with the Heights property, right? Subdivided.
That was a little separate act.
Yeah, yes.
That was an act, that wasn't.
That's, that was an act from the state. That's a whole different.
Right, but it was one plot and it was subdivided and.
But but it was through a state. It might be a little bit different just because it was a whole thing with the state. Roland Heights was separate from the town.
Yeah.
So.
The family did it like a couple years ago.
I wanna give, I just wanted to put that as a pin if you guys left before, and depending on how this conversation with historic co- uh commission goes.
Yeah.
But I don't know if historic commission, do you want to open your meeting?
Um, if we're ready to discuss, I can do that.
I don't think we have a quorum.
Okay.
I'm I'm gonna step down. I'm gonna break yous.
Okay, yes, we do have a quorum.
We have a quorum. So I'll call our meeting to order, historical commission, March third, twenty twenty five at twenty five minutes of eight o'clock.
Okay, um, so I believe last time we had the conversation and Jen had given a presentation. Um, the society, the select board had, I just wanna give a brief recap. The select board had written a letter of support in December of twenty twenty four, I believe, or twenty twenty three, I believe, to add the house to the National Historic Registry. In that, through that application, it came back from Mass Historic suggesting or advocating to have the studio added as well. Um, and that they would kind of be a joint package. Um, the studio and the studio property is town owned property. That would not change. That's why the commission is kind of involved. Um, whereas the house has the grant agreement with the society that manages the house. Um, and that would stay as as that is also. Um, and so this was the conversation. The commission had come before the board asking for a letter of support to add the studio to the um registry as well, so then it could be a complete package with the house and the studio together. There were a couple questions as far as um what could or couldn't be done um with the property legal. Um, Tamika and Austin had reached out to legal to get some clarification on that. Um, I don't know if the board, I, like I said, I know Tom still had questions as far as um the property and not necessarily his concern. And I just want to voice his concern because he's not here, is what it was before, was if there were plans for recreation or um reconfiguring town buildings or anything, um, that that's a a parcel of land that goes down to track essentially. And if we needed or wanted to utilize some of that land coming up the hill, would we be able to if it were on the registry? I think it's his. Is that kind of the summary, Tamika, that
Yes.
you recall also?
And there's a legal opinion from K P Law.
Um, so the I don't know if um the board has had the opportunity to read this or not.
It was in the back, yes.
Yeah.
Through the chair?
Sure.
I have read this and I do have some questions for clarification.
Okay.
Um, number one is it looks like the legal opinion is referring to the town as the owner of the property. So it would be the town who is requesting the national registry. Even though the Historic Society Commission would be the one putting the paperwork through because the town owns the building.
So if I may.
That's what I'm reading here, so.
Yeah. So if I may, the the commission is, the historical commission is a town appointed entity that works on behalf of the town. The society is separate. Um, so this is for the studio only. This legal opinion is for the studio only, which is town owned property. And the the, and the town owns and manages it currently. That wouldn't change. It's just the commission um has agreed to work with the society, I believe. I don't wanna speak, misspeak, so please correct me. To work with the society to kind of get this package together. Um, so they would be working kind of on the, as the town representative. Um, but we, we as select board would, they're asking us as select board to provide a letter of support to add the the studio to the registry. We already provided the the letter of support for the house. That's taken care of. We don't need to do anything else with that. This is for, to add the studio. Is that?
Yes.
I I appreciate that comment. That's not where I was going.
Okay.
Where I was going is if the town owns this and we are responsible for this in perpetuity. So we become a landlord forever on this piece of property. And I wanna make sure that according to what I read in the legal opinion, and maybe Austin, you can help me here, is that if the wood studio is granted national registry, we have the ability to do whatever we want with the building. We can demolish it, we can do anything we want, we just can't use federal funds for it. So it would be at the town expense if we wanna move it. If there's some reason we have to move it because we are looking at the town center in a different way, five, ten years from now. And if we wanna divide the land from the building that Tom was discussing, we would be able to do that. I just don't know what, how complicated that would be under the registry. That's my concern. So there are some things there that kinda are buzzing around in my mind that I just wanna get clear of the way I read this.
Name and address.
Green Polyfocal, eleven Sunnyside Ave. Uh, could somebody just read that so that we know what it says?
Okay, sorry. Um, I can um, you have requested an opinion as to whether the town, by listing the historic building known as the Wood Studio on the National Register of Historic Placeses Places, the National Register, will be subject to restrictions limiting the town's ability to make alterations to the building. In my opinion, a listing on the National Register without more will not restrict the town's ability to make alterations to the building or even to demolish the building, provided that the town does not seek any federal or state funds, licenses or other permits for a project involving the property slash building. The National Register is a list of historic buildings, properties and locations maintained by the National Park Services, Park Service and governed by the Code of Federal Reg- Regulations. The benefits of a listing on the National Register include access to grants and federal tax credits listing in a searchable database and documentation of the building's historic significance. Thirty six C F R sixty dot two. Historic properties that are listed on the National Register are also included in the Commonwealth's Register of Historic Places, the State Register, and have access to state grants, G L chapter nine, section twenty six C. If the building is listed on the National Register or State Register, the town may undertake any project involving the building, property, building without federal or state oversight, unless the town needs to obtain funds, licenses or permits from any any federal or state agencies or the term, the town affirmatively grants a historic preservation restriction on the property. A project is broadly defined to include any action, activity, program, construction or modification. G L chapter nine, section twenty six C, if state review is triggered, for example, the Massachusetts Historic Commission, M H C, will determine if the project will have an adverse effect on the property building. Since adverse effect is defined defined very broadly to include the destruction or alteration of all or any part of the site, it is very likely that the M H C will issue a determination of adverse effect. I D. The M H C, the state agency issuing the permit, license or funding, and the town must consult to discuss ways to eliminate, eliminate, minimize or mitigate the adverse effects to the property. Nine fifty C M R seventy one dash zero or dot zero seven. If the town intends to seek national or state funds, licenses or permits, please let me know and I will discuss the nature and scope of review in greater detail. In summary, it is my opinion, if the town places the building on the National Register and by extension in the State Register, the town is not prevented from changing the use of the building or the property or the building and may even demolish the building, provided that the town does not seek federal or state funds, licenses or permits for projects involving the property and or the building, and the town does not grant any restrictions on the property or building. Note though, that even if the town may not need any such funds, licenses or permits, the town may want to consider the potential optics of demolishing a national slash state registered building if demolition is a possibility in the future. Please let me know if you have any questions or would like to discuss this matter in more detail.
Thank you.
Our attorney from K P Law.
Thank you.
One of our attorneys. Name and address.
Tim Norwald, one forty nine, Palmigussit. I was gonna ask this question to put out there, not only the planning board involved, but since the R D I C handles town property and management, should they be involved in this? I just thought I'd throw it out there just because I don't know.
I, oh, I think R D I C's scope is the, I think, the redevelopment of town property for an economic development purpose, whereas this is more of a historic preservation. Hence why the select board and historic commission have been involved.
I only was looking at it from the property standpoint, not the building. That was the only question I had out there, wanted to know a bit.
It, you know, and certainly, um, you know, I think the planning would be involved if the board and the town does divi- uh decide to pursue subdividing the land. Um, obviously, we'd come and let you're employed there.
Just wanna make sure they were, if they need to be involved, they would be involved.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Did the commission have?
I I was just gonna say, it it essentially says that the town can do anything it wants to it as long as we don't utilize any state or federal funding or poll permits at the state or federal level.
Um, Harry, do you have more questions?
No, no, I just, I I just wanna make sure, cause once we do this, this is forever. And I wanna make sure the town is protected. If whoever comes in the future wants to do certain things to make the town center better or whatever, that they have the ability to do that. And again, I mean, if you're gonna do something, to me, I say it should go through town vote. I mean, it's not something anybody can just make a decision on.
Um, give me one second. Paul?
What I would like to see of of this is a description of the property or is it, well, of it, obviously, the sites in the center of town are numbered and so it has a number and I'd like to know the the size of the site that the buildings are on and, you know, just what type of land is involved with them.
So I think Austin, i- if you can pull that up, um, commission has a couple, a comment or two.
I I just have a comment with with respect. We keep talking about the redevelopment and the use of the property. The whole reason why we're here and we're here with the Historical Society is to preserve them. There is not an intent that they will be torn down. We want to preserve them for the history of the town. There was a whole bunch of people that came to the last meeting. There's many here that are in support. We have heard time and again from the residents that these are, these are historical assets. And the whole point of this is we don't want them to be torn down. We want to keep them. We want the designation. We want the history to be there for the next generations and we would like to be able to do what we need to to get some grant funding, ideally, to help with the maintenance of the buildings, to help with the preservation. So I I understand the, you know, the reservations with, you know, could we potentially use these pieces of property for further development or expansion in town? The whole reason why we're here is so that that doesn't happen. We're here, we're here to keep them and preserve them because they're an important part of this town's history. Not to tear them down to, and I, again, I I respect and understand um uh Tom's position. And I don't think anybody is stating that we have any reservations with use of the property behind the wood studio. We're just talking about preserving the buildings and getting those as designated as the historical sites.
Well, if I, if I, if I inferred that my object was to tear it down, it was not. My object is, what if we need to move it? What if we find a better location twenty years somehow where the town has grown and it can be the best it can be? Does the town have the ability to do that? And according to this, the answer is yes.
Yes, yes.
To make it, not tear it down, but to keep it what it is, only maybe relocate it, that's all.
Yes. Sure.
And there may be opportunities to utilize funding, grant funding, federal or state grant funding to do so. I mean, there was a, the
Right.
I think back to Holden a number of years ago when they put the new C V S in, they moved, they relocated a historic building down down the street.
Right, 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 right.
Um, so it happens and it can happen.
Yes.
Right, it would be at our expense, but that's something we can deal with later.
Potentially.
Um, I just wanted to add also that, Harry, I don't know, Harry, if you recall, when we were on town center study group during covid, there was a lot of conversation about ways to kind of revitalize the wood house and studio and that it can really be a hub for um tourism and kind of the the eco tourism and the historical tourism. Um, we drive through a lot of uh central and western mass communities. They have really old houses and a lot of them are converted into to to opportunities for ec- small economic development. We don't have a lot of that. A lot of our old houses have been uh torn down and and redeveloped. Um, this would provide an opportunity where the societies in the house and the studio would still be able to be maintained as a meeting space. And we had confirmed at our last meeting that that was, that would be the intent to kind of still be able to utilize it as we currently do
Right.
um, on the studio side. But if there's opportunities, then the 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 um town and the society can apply for for. But if there's opportunities, then the, 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 um, town and the society can apply for, for funding to kind of beautify and bring up, um, those properties and make them even more attractive to, to tourism.
Austin, maybe you can help me on this. I'll follow. If the, first off, the town is the owner of the property. The town is the one that accepts the National Registry. Once we accept that, we own it. We can't lease it anymore, so we really don't lease it to them anymore.
No, that's not true.
That's not true.
That's not true.
That's not true.
Yeah, so we could, we could.
'Cause I didn't see anything on here about that. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, so we could still continue. Um, I think, you know, one question that could come up is, um, if the town ever decided to, um, you know, sell the property, for example, let's say to the Historic Society, um, that designation would, would carry through, right? So it's the property that is, uh, assigned to the regist- register. Um, but we, um, can continue to operate under our grant agreement now.
Okay, okay. 'Cause I was wondering who would have control of that? Historical Society or the town who would be ultimately responsible?
Yeah, so we are still the owner.
Yep.
Um, and with the Wood House, we are operating under a grant slash lease agreement with the Historical Society, which has its own standard terms, um, that the board approved last year. Sorry.
No, and I was just gonna say, and that already has a letter of support. The house already has a letter of support. This is solely for the studio. Um, Tim and then Carol, name and address, or name.
Tim Norwald, one four nine, Palmigussit. Like, just because we're gonna talk about this in the planning board, which I just didn't know about, and this is probably directed to you guys, was the thought process to, to basically where the driveway is and that hill, combine that with lot fourteen to make it a complete package, the studio and the house, and then break off the other, say, three quarters of an acre to give as, to the town to be used for rec or whatever like that? That's what I'm trying to get a feel for before our meeting comes up.
I don't, I don't think we had any ideas specifically, as to what exactly to, I think it was just, it came up.
So I, if I, if I may, I, I think the conversation last meeting, I don't wanna speak for the society, they're here. The society did, did not have any real interest in, in absorbing the studio also as far as part of their grant agreement. They want to maintain the house and the parcel. The question was, can the town maintain ownership of the studio and continue to use it as we have, as the town has, as meeting space and, and whatever? But is there a way where, do you see how, uh, we're looking at parcel thirteen here, the one acre exempt town of Rutland? Um, if, if, if town wanted to, would there be a way to kind of cut, essentially cut that lot in half or, or closer to the studio, the parking area, something? If town wanted to develop, um, or utilize that, that hill? It's essentially the hill down from the studio down to the, to the track. Um, and that was the question.
Right, that's what I was, I was trying to figure out if you wanna cut it or if you wanna combine it. That's what I was looking to try to get at.
My understanding from the society, and I don't wanna, was that the society does not wanna combine. They wanna stay as it is. It sounded like the consensus last meeting was that the town wanted to maintain ownership and, and, um, control of the studio, but, um, have, the, this commission has asked to be able to have a letter of support to include that on the.
The only reason I was asking, 'cause that's an R forty zone, so that's, that's why when I see one acre, I see R forty. That's in the R forty district of town, so that was my only concern. If you break it up between less than, uh, forty thousand square feet or an acre, can you do anything on it now? Because it's not.
Well, and I think some of it would be if then essentially thirteen and twelve could be combined at some point.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know, you know what I mean, that, because it's all, that's still all town of Rutland property, um.
But what I was getting at, Leah, is that if you took thirteen and you broke a quarter acre off of it and just had a quarter acre for the Wood Studio, I'm not sure, and again, this would be questions for John to talk about, because it's below an acre, is it developable, being able to be even, anything done to it? Because it's below an acre inside the R forty zone of town? That was a question. And again, these are all questions.
Yep.
I'm just bringing them up, that's all. I don't wanna say, commit to anything, so, and again, town property, maybe that doesn't apply. I don't know that for a fact.
Would, yeah, so would it be possible, if, if that is a problem, then could you just move the lot line for fourteen and thirteen goes with twelve? So that they would both maintain the size requirements? Do you see what I'm saying? If you just merge that section of the house with the property at fourteen and the rest of it with twelve. So I think it's all town property. It doesn't really matter. We're just reconfiguring lines on town property.
And I think that that's a conversation, to be honest, that may, because it's a hill also, that may not even, I don't think that that would be the, the ideal piece. So I think before us right now is if, if the board, the, the three of us are amenable to writing a letter of support to add the, the studio to the registry, um, very similar to what we did for the house. Um, Carol, I know you had your hand up, sorry.
Yeah, Carol opened my turkey head, so I'll stand up. Um, just points of thought, no, no opinion here. Um, is there a difference between being on the registry and the preservation? I, I heard that, that there's, there's a stark, like, you can't demolish, you can't do anything if it's preserved. So I just, I'm looking to see if we're looking to have a preservation or just a, a registry.
So I, I'll let, uh, the society, the commission speak, I think, but my understanding is similar to like a conservation restriction or an agricultural restriction. They're, they're more strict and it's deed restricted. Um, and essentially, to your point, you can't, you can't demolish. You, it's a much more stringent for repairs or anything. The, the application or the, the ask is not to go on as a restriction. It's just asking to be added to the list. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
In, in that vein, with packaging it, does it become one registry for the two buildings? And if that's the case, should it then be divided up? And I, that's just floating it out there. If there are two standalone buildings and something happens to one, it's not encumbered by being packaged with the other one? And all of this may never happen, but just something to think about. Um, and then, does the registry cover land or is it just the building? So I guess just in the thoughts of moving lines and things like that, that's all.
So I think, I, my understanding from the registry is it's the parcel. So if the parcel were smaller, it would cover the parcel, um.
So it is land and building?
Is my understanding, um, but I, that's an area for clarification. As far as, um, kind of combining, I don't think that there's a whole lot of, um, want. My impression from our last meeting was there was, on the town side, there was not a, a town want to combine the house and the studio lots together. Um, and from, it sounded like from the society's side as well, there was not a strong desire to wanna combine, um, the, the house and the studio together. I think the town appreciates being able to utilize the studio, um, as, as meeting space and as a, um, for even small group recreation and everything, um, where the, the house is very much the, the Historical Society and the, the museum piece as well.
Maybe pros and cons to both, so just to look at that.
Yep.
I mean, I don't, I don't wanna put Ann and Scott on, on the spot, but, um, we were essentially told by the Mass Historical Commission that we had to include the studio, the studio with the house. It wasn't, we couldn't just pick and choose one or the other. It's the whole package because it was his home, his studio. They wanted both to go together. So we're not doing it just because we want to have both, as we've said, there's.
And ultimately, the town still owns, Austin, to your point, and Harry, to your point, the town still owns the property, um, that the Historical Society has. The Historical Society has a grant agreement, the, the house, um, the Historical Society has a grant agreement that kind of manages the, the house.
Um, I, I appreciate, uh, the patience. I just wanted clarification so that I, the land can be separated, the town can do whatever it wants. So I feel very good that, that answered kind of my questions in terms of going forward, so I appreciate that.
Sorry, I don't know your names.
Ruth Lambert, I'm part of the Historical Society, I'm from Prescott Street. Um, the, what I was going to say is just what Jen just said, in order to apply for the house, the Wood House to be on the register, it, the requirement was to have the studio, because that's where Franklin Wood painted. He had, um, fellow artists come there and have events, and they painted the scenery from there, so that's why they required it. And, um, if push came to shove, if we wanted to have the studio, it can probably be moved onto the property behind the Wood House, which is flat, or I mean, it would need some work and there would be an event in itself, but, I mean, that's a potential.
I'd like to make a motion.
Roll call.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the select board author and sign a letter of support for the Historical Society for the Wood Studio.
Historical Commission for Wood Studio.
Okay.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other conversation? Rule call. Harry?
Segment I.
Matt's an I.
Whitman I. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience tonight.
All right.
Um.
Can we close our meeting?
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you for those of you who came. I'll entertain a motion to close for the Historic Commission.
Motion to close.
All right, Michelle moves. Wait a second.
Second.
Jen seconds. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Carrie? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I hope everyone will leave. That's why we had to do the important stuff.
He was smart.
Yeah.
Okay, good. You did, okay. I'm trying to get our notes caught up for our meeting. Thanks. So I wanna make sure.
Too much information for this anyway. I was trying. This weekend I brought.
Oh, I forget that. Jen, how long is this process take?
We want to say that they've been trying to do it for a very, very long time, and they just kept hitting roadblocks, which is why at this point, we, um, they asked the commission to get involved and help out, so we're. We've never done it. We've never done it as a town. You know, the only place that we have in town is St. Musputnam, which was done privately. So, um, honestly, those of us that are involved don't have any experience actually going through the process.
That was my only concern, 'cause they referred to it as the owner. Whoever is that is the owner. So I looked there and said, well, they're the owner, they got it. But the town's gonna own it, not the historical. I mean, we could probably sell it and run it to later on if there's a nation, but.
Yeah, no, that's why we're, that's why we're here to do, you know, get this letter of support without the okay, the select board.
It, it, your information, just have people check if they've owned that, 'cause I have.
If the board's amenable, well.
But I started to sign up where the.
I was gonna just ask to go to the Board of, as Board of Public Works, to get the review for, uh, request for abatement of water charging.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think we need to.
To see if it's gonna cost your money to cancel your contract.
I know.
Yeah.
I'll see you tomorrow or something.
Um, if the board's amenable to taking the Board of Public Works' review request for abatement of water charges, um, provided in our packet, um, there was a request to abate, uh, water charge, um, and DPW has, um, provided their recommendation to, uh, deny the abatement, um, given that the meter was, at the location was removed and tested at the homeowner's request, and it was found to be in good working order. Um, and the, the water passed through the meter. Um, does anyone have any questions? We have the.
Yeah, can I make a request that, although I think I understand the written language, I'm not sure by the letter, could I, could somebody actually interpret or read that letter for me?
So it says, to reassess bill abatement, I redacted.
Right.
The landlady of the above property felt like my bill from July twenty twenty-four to October twenty twenty-four to be rechecked because I live alone in the above property, and my bill went up when the new meter was put, I think it's supposed to be in.
Yeah.
I complained, was put, I complained later, part of last year, and um, the meter was checked. Um, my bill is back to the two hundred dollars and it is concerning. I will appreciate if an abatement could be done on my July to October bills. Thanks for all you do. Yours faithfully, redacted.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so they checked the, the meter, and it seems to be the meter is fully functioning as expected, actually. Um, we have the history of, um, the bills, I believe. Um. So, um, like I said, DPW had made the recommendation, um, to deny, deny the abatement. Um, it seems that usage has fluctuated a little bit, um, but it could be, um, seasonal, it could be time of year. I don't know if there's a, a dripping faucet or a leaky toilet or something also, um.
I mean, I guess, I can understand, going back to, uh, uh, eleven nine twenty twenty-three, the reading only showed a thousand, and going to, well, it was installed on four sixteen, it shows, you know, forty-five hundred, four thousand actual, eighteen hundred, so I, I'm wondering what happened before that, but if you look at the meter and the new meter that was installed was checked, and Chris has said, uh, after reading the paperwork, it is, I am recommending the meter at this location was removed and tested at the homeowner's request and found to be in good working order. So I can't, I, I, I don't know anything before that, but if it's in good, good working order now.
So it looks like it went, usage went from, um, in, uh, uh, April of twenty twenty-four of just over a thousand, um, actual, and then in, uh, July, it was about eighteen hundred, and then September, or October was twenty-two hundred, and now it's back down to below a thousand, so it almost seems like a seasonal or something.
Yeah.
Um, usage.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna point out, um, the, the author of the letter indicates that she's a landlord. So I don't know if there was fluctuating ten- tendency during that time.
Right.
Um, this is also a new construction home. I believe if you look at the first page when it says it was acquired, um, it's only been acquired within the last couple of years, so the meter would have been new at installation as well.
Well, I guess, according to this, unless there's more, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the request for abatement on Fifty-One Grizzly Drive.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other conversation? Rule call. Harry?
Segment I.
Matt's an I.
That's right.
Whitman I, with regrets and just kind of would encourage the property owner to look for weeks and everything. I'm sure they probably have though, and I'm sure DPW has talked, talked with them as well. Thank you. Thank you all. Um, Austin, do you wanna discuss briefly the library strategic plan update? I know, I think you've gotten a few questions about it, um, and to designate a select board representative for that, um.
True. Yeah, so, um, uh, library director, Carrie Remington, um, asked us to participate in the library's strategic plan update process. Uh, so through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, um, a strategic plan is required to be eligible for state grant funding through the commission. Um, the approving authority for a strategic plan, which kind of talks about level of services, programs, activities, um, is the library trustees themselves. The trustees and the director would like to engage members of the community to be a part of this strategic plan update. They asked, um, for a member of the select board to participate in the, um, process as well. Um, they initially indicated, uh, and actually asked and reached out to member Galvin. Um, I thought that would be appropriate for the board to make that decision, who represents them. Um, so we, uh, put this on the select board agenda for tonight. On further discussion with, uh, with member Galvin, he actually doesn't have the ability to participate, um, in the public forum. Um, so we'd like to ask if another member of the board. Um, the strategic plan, uh, there'll be a, um, is it a public forum or info session? Focus group. There'll be two focus groups taking place next Monday.
Correct.
Um, one, I think, is at ten AM.
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty, and then another at six thirty PM. You just have to attend one. You don't have to, have to attend both, so depending on your availability.
It says here she's hoping to have a member at each session. It doesn't say that it needs to be the same member, so I don't know if.
Okay, yeah, so she told us just one for, yeah. If you get ten both, that'd be great, but, yeah.
Right.
I can do the ten thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to do the six at night or whatever.
I can try for the six o'clock at night, um, you know, I usually, my Mondays, I usually try to keep because we have select board meetings, but if somebody else wants to do, like.
I just wanted to know, Paul has actually already. I just wanted to know, Paul has actually already volunteered for the six PM in another capacity, but.
Okay. Oh, perfect.
I was just gonna say, I.
Are you doing a video of it or something? Are you taping it, Paul?
No, we weren't planning on doing the video, um, one of the staff and myself will be attending the six thirty meeting.
Okay.
Um, as interested parties from the cable part of this, okay?
Okay.
But, you know, I can wear two hats and.
And she's, she, there's a maximum of twelve participants per session and that includes all of the other folks in the community that we did some outreach to.
Okay.
So, are you, okay.
Can I just ask a question about, um, you said the long-term plan is required for the grant funding opportunities?
To be eligible, yes.
Do we not already have one?
We do have one, um.
So do we, do we often have these ones?
No, so it's, it's typically a five-year plan, like our, um, like some of our other planning documents, it's a five-year plan.
Okay.
I believe it either expired last year, it's up to expire, um, it's on their website, so to be eligible for future years, we need to update our strategic plan.
Okay, and is it usual that, is it just select board that they request of participation from, are there other?
So they've reached out to, I th- I think recognizing that the select board, um, is a governing authority in town, um, and obviously the public and, and the select board's responsibilities. We use a lot of the space in the library, so I think it's a good faith effort to reach out to the board. Uh, but there's also other members of the community, they asked me to participate, other members of town staff.
Yeah, town staff, um, they asked for a parent of young children, uh, they asked for a teenager to participate.
Yeah, so it's, I think, trying to catch a wide array of folks who use the library services and facilities.
I don't recall, since I've been on the board, having a direct, um, request to, for the board to have representation. It could have been one of the ones that was, happened during one of the years that we had liaisonship and they kind of utilized that or not, I'm not one hundred percent sure. If this, or if this is a new requirement for grant funding or something.
Yes, I don't think it's required, I, I think the trustees just recognized, especially after our recent conversation about facilities use. I think it was a good faith effort on behalf of the trustees, um, and the director to involve the board and other stakeholders.
Thank you, um, so, um, if Paul will be there already at the six o'clock as, as kind of, uh, cable and they're limited on space, then, um, I cannot do a ten thirty on a Monday morning, um, period. So, um, I, that's, I'm, are you?
Okay, so I can.
Are you able, I mean, you're more than welcome to by all means, you can.
I have a little free time now, so I can do ten thirty.
Yeah, that works, and it'll be interesting, I mean, I appreciate you guys doing it to see what the.
Well, i- if that's what they'd like to get this thing done to the fed, for the feds, I'm all for it, we can get that grants or anything else from them.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have two of the big items left, um, as far as I see on my agenda. Um, the fiscal year twenty five budget discussion of spending and internal controls, as well as the fiscal year twenty six budget. Um, Austin, do you have a preference as to where we go?
Next year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, I feel like we need an answer for next year, um, before, um, I know FinCom has reached out to me asking, um, if we have any, um, direction leading up to our meetings on, um, Wednesday and Thursday. So I think the hope tonight, um, Austin, if you wanna speak to it also, is, um, uh, look at, um, directive of the wages, especially the non-contracted, non, uh, union employee wages. Um, the level of services and then kind of what budget option, um, we would be going with. Um, if we are doing an override, um, any, any ballot question, um, needs to be transmitted to the town clerk's office, um, I forget the date off the top.
It's April ninth?
I was gonna say, it's within, like, we have about a month, I think, um, and that's, uh, per MGL requirement and everything. Um, Austin, do you want, you need to take this, do you want to like?
Um, no, so, um, I think you did a pretty good job, the only comment I'll mention is, uh, the board now has three budgets to consider. You have the initial, uh, recommended budget from staff, you have, um, at the board's direction, um, the two point, uh, two million dollar cut budget. And you now have a, a half and half, as we've called it, um, approximately one point one million dollar cut budget. So, uh, those have been provided to the board, the first two budgets, um, actually a month ago now. Um, and the most recent, um, half and half budget was provided on Friday for the board to review and consider. Some of the action items requested were, um, I think discussed and, and asked to be included, uh, from Member Ledger, talking about, um, wages and if there's any decisions that would like to be made at the board level on wages, um, level of services, um, so your priority, right? If you, I think if you focus as the chief policymaking body, one of your most important policy documents is your budget. So there's some discussion that could be had there if the board would like, um, there, but ultimately, um, with all due respect, I think the board needs to pick a budget for us to present on Wednesday and Thursday. Um, I think it would be foolish to present three budgets to the select board, I mean, to the finance committee, um, on Wednesday and Thursday. I think it'll be awfully confusing for town staff, it'll be confusing for the boards, and most importantly, confusing for the community. So I am asking very strongly for the board to make a decision tonight.
Um, if I may, I think the, the biggest, um, consideration in my opinion is kind of which of the budgets we go with. Um, I see it as, although Austin has done a fabulous job with, uh, forecasting and projections. Um, originally, we had the conversations as to, um, we're two point two million dollars down this year, uh, that would get us a year-ish. Um, and then he provided ad- additional options, I think the board was very vocal about taking those longer-term options off. Um, feeling that, and that needs to be an additional conversation, the school has been pretty, um, Wachusett has been pretty open with their, their targeted plans. Obviously, there's a lot of funding and everything is projections, but what they're, um, sh- sh- based off their strategic plan, what their opportunities would look like. Um, Austin, I think, had done a pretty good job providing what those, um, extended budgets would look like from a, from a town side and what we could do, um, if we had additional, um, more than one year of funding. Um, however, it seems that the board was kind of, um, wanting more, felt that there wasn't accountability there. So, um, we are, I, I kind of see it, and if the board doesn't feel this way, that, that to two point two million dollar override, which would essentially keep us on a, on a forward trajectory, um, and be able to provide the, the level of services and maintain and, um, not necessarily expand greatly, but continue with the, our population growth. Um, there would, we had asked for a two point two million dollar cut in case an override or anything would fail, um, and what that would look like. Um, and then most recently, it was a one point one million dollar cut with a one point one million dollar, um, override. Um, I think are the options, I would like to s- to have a decision on what those options are. Um, for me, the, the wages piece and the level of services and everything, um, anytime we're looking at cutting significant amounts, that's cutting and, that's cuts in staff, it's not, we're not gonna be able to save on a cola or, or not. Um, so while I think those conversations are really important and I would like to make those decisions tonight also, so we know going forward what budget, what's included in that budget. Um, I think that the bigger bulk is where, how we're, how we're funding, what we're funding.
It just, um, so, since the initial budget that was presented on February third, we now have received, uh, the school committee hasn't, hasn't finalized, but we received the initial preliminary numbers from the dist- district administration. Um, Wachusett School Assessment has come down a, just slightly, um, from what I projected, so the new projected deficit, um, is, uh, two point zero seven three two seven nine. And that includes our town, um, initially recommended budget and the updated school figures from both, um, Wachusett, Bay Path. I, but again, I just wanna recognize that the dis- school district has not finalized the budget yet.
Wachusett hasn't, Bay Path has, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Bay Path has finalized, it has gone up s- a, a little bit, um, Bay Path's from your projections.
Yeah.
Um, and that's finalized, but Wachusett is still, um, to be voted upon.
Yeah.
Um, so this also does not, following our, um, f- financial policies that this same group of board members voted in, um, a year ago, does not utilize any one-time revenue, we, if you recall, some of our, um, trouble in the past has been, we've presented budgets that have had some or significant amounts of one-time revenue in, um, which cannot be relied upon and is poor fiscal policy to be utilizing one-time revenue for ongoing operating expenses. Um, and part of the conversation that we hear in the community is, we don't take care of our current buildings, so why should we even consider any new buildings or anything? And part of that is we should be utilizing any sort of, um, free cash to leverage for, um, for more, um, targeted building maintenance and repair, which would obviously s- um, save money in the long run as well. Um, if we had more efficient or, um, properly maintained buildings. Um, so I just wanted to be clear that this, that all of the budgets that Austin has presented does not incorporate any use of, um, one-time revenue, which in the past, we've always had, um, I think the over-year budget, we had about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one-time revenue between free cash and ARPA, I think. Um, and then last year, I believe it was almost four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in free cash. Um, the.
I see more, about six hundred.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Austin has done a really good job, um, more comprehensive than any of our other, um, administrators with our staff and working very closely with especially, especially Wachusett administration to try to better understand our, um, projections. So these projections are, um, still projections and it's still forecasting, but, um, they take into account our, our CBAs, which previous projections had not done, they had just done a, a flat, I think, not even maybe a one and a half percent cola for all staff and not considered anything in previous projections, um, and had done a flat, I think, three or four percent increase for, I think, three percent increase for education, which we know, um, is not the way our education budgets work at all. So even if Wachusett has a three or four percent increase, given the regional agreement, um, or same with Bay Path, those numbers are not, don't translate to a three percent for us. Um, I think we've been hitting almost twenty percent with Bay Pass, Bay Path the past couple of years. Um, and Wachusett, we've been in the, um, I think, ten to fifteen percent the past few years.
For our assessment, um, the average since FY seventeen has been about six percent, the most recent years have been between seven and nine percent.
For the, on the town side?
Yes, for our assessment, yeah.
So I estimate it high, sorry.
And so, and just, I did a little bit too in, in my model, I have it at ten percent just to be conservative, uh, because I think our original assessment last year was nine point five five. Um, so I was just trying to have a little bit of space there. Uh, but, you know, our assessment for this year, um, preliminary assessment is just about seven. Or I'll round up and say eight.
I, I wrestled with this a lot, even when I asked the board to do a, what I call a fifty fifty. It wasn't because, see, I look at, if we do a two and a half override, we are putting all the onus on the town, asking them to put in more. And that's after, Austin, correct me, but didn't our valuations on property go up nearly three hundred and thirty million dollars?
For residential property?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that three hundred and thirty million is gonna have a high tax bite and that's gonna be put on the people. So now we're asking for two and a half percent on top of that other tax bite when we've had property reevaluated. So I'm looking at this and saying, how can we get something done without putting the onus on one particular group? And I started doing some numbers, I looked through your budget, I loved it, I was able to do a lot with it, and I looked at our, some of our finance requirements. So the fifty fifty, if we do that, yes, we cut services by about one million dollars approximately. And we still have about one, one point million to make up. But when I looked at, and we talk about, we don't take money out of reserves or out of our stabilization, because we try not to, but it's not, uh, yes or no answer, it's an option, that if we wanna do that, we can. Now, if we look at, and I went through every line item on the budget on the fifty fifty, I went through every line item on the two and a half, and I went through every line item, what I'm gonna call the slash and burn, okay? Everything is on the employees of the town. And what I kind of looked at was, we have, just to give you an example, one point three billion, one point three million, I wish it was billion, one point three million in our stabilization fund. How much goes in there every year? About six hundred thousand? Based on our five percent?
Yeah, it's five percent, uh, of free cash, the last year was about fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah.
In stabilization?
Yeah.
Per year.
But that depends on how our free cash level is, if it's higher, then it's higher.
Yeah, that's what goes into stabilization?
Yeah.
Huh. How did I come up with six hundred thousand?
I have no idea.
Thank you.
Wishful thinking.
That would be excellent.
No, I'm looking here and it's, and it takes two percent, um, of the target fund, and I'm looking two percent, that comes to six hundred. So, and, you know, I'm gonna have to just tell me, figure out what I missed then, because, uh, fifty thousand going into, how do we get to one million in stabilization if we're only putting fifty in there?
It's been years.
Well, and so actually, and, and I, I was actually too high, so, and for FY twenty five, our contributions to stabilization were, I'm, I'm just gonna round up and say thirty eight thousand. So we do five percent to, uh, of each to stabilization, capital stabilization, OPEB trust fund, each at about thirty eight thousand dollars each.
Okay.
And it's always five percent of whatever the free cash, the certified free cash.
Right, right, okay, so if we look at that, I'm thinking, okay, we've got a pro, we've got over two million dollars in cash. Right now, you figure free cash stabilization, and I'm not counting OPEB that we can use for health insurance. We got over two million, so I, I kinda asked myself, I said, okay, we've got two million in cash, that's nice. But now we're gonna go to the town and say, we got two million in cash, but we're gonna ask you for a two and a half override, and we're gonna keep our cash. If I was a person in town, I have a hard time accepting that. I would, why? Because why should I pay for everything when I should expect something from the town? So that's why I've said, this gives me the greatest opportunity to say, if I wanna pass an override, I can pass it. I don't have to take from stabilization. If we wanna cut back, or we wanna take back some of the cuts that we did, we can do that. But my feeling is, the board shouldn't have to make a decision, it should be the finance committee, the town administrator, and the select board, all who sit down together and make a decision what cuts, not necessarily what the program is. Because it's gonna be two, two point two million dollars no matter what, how do we make it easy? How does everybody buy into this? So that's why I was looking at the fifty fifty, because, yeah, we're gonna get fifty thousand back, if we do the one million from the cash, that'll still leave us with about one point three million in cash. If we take it out of stabilization, if we take it out of free cash, it'll still leave the town with about one point three million. And no override, or we have some override and more free cash in stabilization, or we cut back. But I'd like to hear at a finance committee meeting, at a round table, what it is we really wanna cut and where. And I, and I, I don't wanna present three, I agree with you, I don't, but I want one that has the most flexibility for us. Cause if I go two and a half, it's two and a half, we're gonna try to arrange whatever we can do. If it's slash and burn, it's slash and burn, we're not going for an override. So this one to me provides the most flexibility for discussion at a meeting.
So.
My side.
I just, I think, um, per the new bylaw that we approved at town meeting a couple of years ago, um, last year actually, and that this board felt very strongly about, um, the budget now sits with the town administrator and the select board, um, and then it gets transmitted to FinCom for their recommendations, they're not, um, they very much feel that they don't have, and per the bylaw. um the, the input on the budget that they once did. Um it's for their, um, for their, them to make recommendations. And if they feel s- very strongly, um that with the town administrator um slash select board, that there's a, a major error. In the one roundtable that we had, um with the select board, or with the select board and FinCom, it wasn't a full member bo- board, I think that was just the three of us, I think it was just Jen, Paul, and myself. Um FinCom had, um consensus, there were no votes taken, and it was early in the process, but very much the consensus with FinCom seemed to be, um, we need the override, and we would rather go for a larger override that is not going, so that next year, if we do, we know if we do a two million dollar override this year, um we're likely looking at another two million dollar override the following year, and two million dollar override the following year. Um and they very much were more of, and this was solely in conversation, there was no vote taken um or anything, but it was just that consensus. We had taken those off of the table, um the longer term, because it seemed the consensus of the board here was maybe to not even do an override period, definitely not anything more than what we need for this year. Um because there seemed to be the sense that there's not enough transparency. Um I think on the school and the town side, I think the school and the towns have been doing huge amounts of advocacy to try to um provide whatever information the communities are wanting and the public is wanting. So I wanna thank um the schools and and Austin and staff um for the, that, those level of transparency that I personally feel um are, are there. Um so that's kind of the, the history of the, the, the override pieces and the, the process as far as FinCom not being super involved at this point.
Well, if I might ask then, why are we meeting with FinCom?
It's a good question.
If we're, if we're doing the budget-
It's a good question, I-
And we're recommending it, why are we meeting with them?
So, we, we need to proceed with the budget process. Um town meeting is two months away. I wouldn't blame the FinCom if on Wednesday and Thursday they say, I don't know what to say about the budget because the select board haven't decided on a budget, right? Um you know, I think in, in most communities, the typical process is town staff and the town manager, town administrator, prepare the budget for the select board to review and transmit to the FinCom for their review to make recommendations to uh to town meeting. That hasn't taken place yet, the transmittal, right? We've now talked about three budgets scenarios. Um so you know, I think the finance committee will be in a challenging position too, because they don't decide on the budget, to make recommendations to town meeting favorable and unfavorable on the budget, and ask questions and provide a report to town meeting.
So based on what you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's our job then to go through the line items, decide how much we want on the budget, what we do as a board. Then, once we get that all settled, then we send it over to the finance committee. Is that what you're saying? Cause we haven't done that.
Respectfully, my, my understanding is to make those higher level decisions like we have here for these action items. And in my opinion, Austin, as the town administrator, is the one that says, okay, we're going for an override. This is the amount, this is what our budget looks like, or no, we're not doing it, this is where the cuts need to happen. This is where they're more appropriate, here versus here, here, here. It's not, in my opinion, this board to go through line item by line item, to say, this is your budget, this is your budget, this is your budget. We do the higher level decisions to, to guide the town administrator.
And, and the challenge that, that we have, right, at, at, from my position is, I presented to you what the, what the needs of the department are, but I don't think that I have the authority to tell you, from a policymaking perspective, we are going to cut the town services by two million dollars, right? That is, I think, where it becomes a policy decision among the board to decide, how do you wanna proceed, right?
So how do we know?
And obviously, I, you know, I don't wanna rehash this, but, but you know, we've been projecting a two million dollar deficit for several months now, right?
Almost a year.
Right. Um and you know, that's the challenge that we're in, is, is this isn't a surprise, right? Um whether it's based off assumptions or actually submitted department budgets, it's now been over a month um since this board has received the initial recommended budget. So um you know, I, you know, I, I would agree with the respect that, you know, I don't think um it's the board's authority to go through and tell me, all right, cut twenty dollars from here and add, add twenty dollars here, right? That's, I think that's, that's staff's role. Um but from a policymaking document, you know, does this fit with the policy direction of the board? And do you support this moving forward to finance committee and Tommy?
Well, I, I guess I have to respectfully disagree. Because ultimately, who's responsible for the financial goodwill of this town? The board. So it is the board's duty to, on your private time, come back, look through it, and then discuss it at the board. I'm looking through that, there's some things on there I think are good and some things I don't think are good. And I think that if I just say, okay, I'm going with two million, I am not doing my due diligence on the budget. Not at all. Not what the tirehead need to do.
I've gone through everything, I've sent Austin numerous emails about my thoughts about what I'm seeing in the line items for the budget. But he still can't, he has no idea what to do, where to make changes, because this board is not providing direction. He used to know how much-
And that's, and that's what looking at is for.
We've been, we've had this for a month, and instead the direction has been to cut millions of dollars, rather than giving critical feedback on the recommended budget that was presented, right? And that's, I think, the frustration that town staff is feeling, and I'm sure the community is feeling now, because this has been public for a month, is, first of all, we don't have a budget to talk about. And we haven't even given the respect of the town departments to talk about the initial budgets that they've submitted. And you know, I feel very strongly that they put a lot of work on this, um especially the initial budget. We had our departmental reviews. I've also, as you noticed, my uh initial town administrator recommended budget also has changes that I would love to talk about, um between the department request and my um recommended column. But we haven't had the ability to do that. And now we're at a point where we really do need to make a decision about the direction forward for budget.
And I-
Right, but don't forget, that fifty-fifty budget I just got on Friday. No talk, no discussion, no board meeting, no discussing it with the finance committee, no nothing. I just had the opportunity to go through it myself, I didn't even have a chance to sit down with you. So, well, I understand your frustration.
Well, with all due respect, Harry, you know what a two point two million dollar budget reduction is. You told me to split it in half, I don't think it's unreasonable to say that our cuts are, are, our service impacts are about fifty percent of that, right? We can go into a little bit detail on that if you've had some questions, but you know, I don't know what the board's gonna get out of me going through line by line and saying, all right, so this uh reduction here is about fifty percent of what I submitted a month ago.
But why can't the finance committee be a part of that? Why?
Because of the new bylaw.
They'll tell you that it's no longer their role.
Right.
They've come out and said that already.
But they're gonna do it anyways, they're gonna go line by line and figure it out what they're doing.
Right, but they're not gonna say anything until we give them a budget to look at.
So if we're meeting, are we meeting with the, all the departments and the committees on Wednesday?
Wednesday and Thursday.
And they're there, meeting with them also?
Correct.
It's one meeting, yeah.
Very similar to last year.
So why, I don't understand then why we can't ask questions at that meeting and discuss what the budget is.
You totally can, but, but uh you're good, you can say-
I know what you're saying.
You can say, let's talk about line item X, and they'll say, sure, what three budgets do you have a question for? Right? How, how confusing is that? If you say, give me a rationale for this increase or this decrease here, and they'll say, what budget are you talking about? It's confusing, right? And I don't think we're demonstrating confidence to the community, with all due respect, that we know what we're doing with, in terms of a budget process. Because this is, eh, you know, I'm gonna be blunt, this is a joke.
I have been-
And I don't think, I really don't think it's fair to the departments and the community that we do not have a budget with the town meeting two months from now.
I won't say it's a joke, I say it's, I say it's, it's unbelievable that we don't have something already. I'll say that. But in my thirty-five years of doing financial work, I am geared to look at stuff and say, hey, why did you do this instead of this? That's part of what we do. You, you wanna, okay, you wanna say we wanna do, we're gonna do two and a half million. So you accept it, we've given it to you, rubber stamp it, don't ask any questions. That's not the way I exist, that's not the way I should do it.
You've had a month to ask questions, Harry.
But no, you don't wanna do line by line item, we're not supposed to. We're not supposed to question whether we're doing sta- I don't, I don't know, you're right, I don't know where we are here. All I know is there's a budget, and we gotta consider the town and the employees both in this budget. If we do two and a half, we're considering the citizens, uh the town only. If we're doing slash and burn, we're considering the citizens only, so-
But my concern, Harry, is that for quite literally thirty days, the board has had this budget. Actually, it's been a little bit more than that, because I think I sent it two weeks before, I actually presented it on February third. So you've had more than thirty days, let's say forty-five days, to review the initial budget document.
So wait a minute, so you're saying the board dropped the ball?
Yes.
Okay. The board, the board, not an individual, the board dropped the ball.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the board has had conversations, it's been on the agenda, and Austin's asked for direction, and it's been crickets. And so I think it's been, you know, cut, it was cut two million dollars, how? It was cricket, so I think I, I think I had said just proportionally, per the, the level of funding, then that's how the departments are gonna get cut, because there was no conversation. So I think this is the first time, last year we did this budget, this, the budget this way with um the new bylaw. No, we didn't, because we didn't have the new bylaw at this time last year. This is the first time through with the new bylaw, and this is the first time that, through, that there's a significant need for raising revenue or significant cuts. Um we, it's not a surprise, I think, over the summer, when Austin put together the forecast in August and September, it was projected that we were gonna be about to two point five million dollars in the whole this year. So this, these numbers aren't, aren't surprising, and I think it's the modeling, it shows the power of Austin's current modeling and forecasting. So we can run around in circles, there's, we're not gonna save two million dollars by going through line by line. We're not gonna save a million dollars by going through line by line. It's a policy decision, are we, is the board comfortable disregarding our financial policies and throwing all of our free cash and stabilization at a deficit that is then going to continue to increase? We know that, we know that, based on the modeling, and if we're using one or two million dollars in one-time revenues, that's just going to roll into next year's deficit, that's what Paxton's facing right now. Um they depleted all of their stabilization and all of their free cash, um and are going into this budget season with nothing. That also impacts our, or potentially impacts our bond ratings. Um so any sort of borrowing that we have upcoming, um the ambulance and everything that has, or the fire truck and everything that has already been approved, um that can be negatively impacted as well if we utilize those. I, I hear the concern in not wanting to ask our residents to pay more. However, I don't feel comfortable asking our residents to pay more and saying we're still gonna cut some. Um and I know from a number of department heads, they felt very strongly that when the override budget was passed, presented and passed a couple of years ago, um there were commitments there, that the, the public safety was going to be expanded with a deputy and a lieutenant, um that the council and aging hours were going to be expanded, expanded, that the library was going to have um expanded children's services, um and all of that. And so the, the department heads are, are protective of those things because those were items that were included in, in the, the override budget. The override budget that didn't use proper modeling for collective bargaining wages, um school education funding. Um and we across the board have seen decreases in our state aid as well, on the school side as well as the, the town side. So our revenue on that side is, is not holding either. Um so I, I hear everyone's frustration. Um the fact of the matter is, we have a level of services in town, a high level of services for a community of ten thousand people, a rural community of ten thousand people. Um and our residents are quite, um, comfortable in expecting of that level of services. Um and so, um, that's how, how I see it personally. Name an address.
Kareem Poliaphical, sunny side of the house. Can, can you give us a, uh, how much it's gonna cost? I'm, I'm a citizen, I don't care about the bottom line, I wanna know how much it's gonna cost me on each one of those, those things?
Um so for example, if the town did a two point five million dollar override, it adds about a dollar and fifty-nine to our current tax rate, so depending on your assessed value of your home-
Just put, eh, put, put five, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, we'll just-
Five hundred, you just don't have-
Yeah, so it's betw- so it goes by, you know, four fifty, five fifty, so in between, so it'd be, I don't know-
Not eight hundred.
Um, let's say, yeah, pay about eight hundred to me say.
So eight hundred dollars a year, that's with the override.
Was it two point five million, a two point five million dollar override?
Okay, is there, have you got the same for, like Harry's the half, half and half?
For the million?
Can-
Uh, yeah, so, well, no, I don't have those numbers right now, um give me two seconds. It'd be about half of that, yeah.
So it'd be four hundred. And then what was the third one? Nothing?
No override.
Well, we know that it'd be-
So there'd be, it'd be like what we've, what we're paying now?
Right, with a two and a half increase, yeah.
Think about your groceries going up, right? So if you're, if you have your same food budget, right, you're gonna be buying less food, right?
Yeah.
So if the town has the same budget, we're gonna have less services because they can't afford the services at, at the current inflation rate.
Um-
Well, if I, if I might, let us not forget, again, that the town's appraised value on property has gone up over three hundred million dollars. That is an additional tax that doesn't show up here.
Name an address.
Michelle Van Leeuwen.
Hold on, sorry, I was gonna go-
Mike Devarekas, five Stevens Way. One big question I have on this, and that Harry just brought up a good point, assess values. All of us here have increased this year, what nobody's talking about until tonight is the assessed property values. Depending on what your level you're at, and to what you said, and your eight hundred dollars or that, that doesn't include your assessed value. So if your taxes are already gonna go up eight hundred, a good example is for me, I'll use my house. Right now, without any overrides, I'm increasing eight hundred dollars, no matter what. On the post on these budget increases, if you went to a two and a half million dollar override, that's another three hundred and seventy-five on top of it. If you were to go to a five million dollar override, you'd be looking at another eight hundred dollars. A seven million dollar one time would boost it up eleven fifty. When twenty-five percent of your town, the senior citizens like myself, and other people who are on the lower end, if you got fat wallets in town, no disrespect to anybody who has money, but it's easier for you. But what about the rest of the town? The town's not gonna accept an override. I lived through the nineteen eighties, when two and a half was the cap. Towns lived-
This is, listen, this is a policy decision for the board, and, and I, I hear that it's your opinion and your campaign speech, and I really don't, I, I don't wanna hear it right now.
Through the chair, that's not what I'm saying. She asked the question on the budget with the increases. What I'm saying is, is that with the assessments, the prices, what, I'm not making a campaign speech. The fact is, eh, you're not, you're missing that we already went up and assessed high value.
I don't think any of us are missing that, it's, Harry's brought it up, we hear that. We all live in town, we all have our own property tax, taxes.
Okay, but you, right, what I'm saying is though, is if you, you gotta understand for the people when you look at an override, what people can afford. So I'm just saying, the town may not go with an override, that's all I'm trying to tell you, that's all.
I, I don't like the idea of an override more than the next person, but if we're going to maintain what we have, even if we do the fifty-fifty, we're looking at having to deal with three point three million next year, which is even more than the two million that we're dealing with now. It's just, it's, there's always going to be a deficit there, and taking off half of this year's current deficit isn't going to make next year any easier. And it, to, to me, it's, the town should maintain what we have, and we should be asking the residents if they're okay with that, and let the residents vote on it at the ballot and at town meeting. And if they voted down, then they've spoken, but they can't vote on it if we don't bring it forward and say, this is what we're recommending as best for the town to keep the services at where they're at. So I'm, I'm in favor of doing the budget at, for this year, to ensure that we can continue at our current level. And again, just making the residents, the ones, giving them the vote and letting them decide. And again, just making the residents, the ones, giving them the vote and letting them decide.
Michelle Van Reet, Cherna Kill. I think with the change in the bylaw and and kind of the flip of of who's presenting the budget, if the select board pre- presents the budget based on like what Austin and the and the department heads have asked for and and you guys present it, is it then FinCom's responsibility to kinda take a look at it and rec- that's where their recommendations come in? Like they prioritize what they think should be passed over other things and then then people can vote on it? So if FinCom says, geez, maybe we should do a fifty fifty or a seventy-five twenty-five, i- isn't that kind of how the, how it's supposed to work? Or or am I totally off base with that?
So my understanding from the bylaw is more so that if there was a huge discrepancy between like town departments and administration and select board, that the depart- it provides an avenue for.
For them to mediate between the different discrepancies, okay.
Right, and then also, um, because FinCom is appointed through the moderator and not unelected, it provides another different perspective set of eyes on the budget to say actu- you know, and and make that recommendation, to go to town meeting and make the recommendation.
Right, so they're gonna kinda quarterback you. So even if you guys make a purport- proposal that is pie in the sky, isn't the FinCom gonna come back and say, you know, we don't really agree with this and then recommend unfavorably?
That's my.
That's too late.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Austin, but I believe it's my recommendation. FinCom can only re- only look at the budget we're giving them. They can't, they can't go back and say, can I see a two, no. We give them a two and a half budget, that's the only thing they can look at. That's the only thing they can work with.
But they can look at it and say, cut it in half.
No, no, it's too late.
No, they can't. No.
Thumbs up or thumbs down at town meeting, that's what they get.
Unfavorable at town floor.
Right. That's why I came up with the fifty fifty, so that if we do decide, if the FinCom agrees with us that we do a million dollar override, it's not a two and a half million override. And what gets me, and and again, you can do projections, you can do analysis all you want. But nobody knows with what's going on in the world right now, if the budget we're gonna look at next year in two thousand and twenty-seven is gonna be the budget we're gonna deal with. Nobody knows. We know what we have today. And I'm just trying to make this town work without punishing. I I will tell you, I don't know how many people told me, if the if, if we go to pass this two and a half and then I've got this other assumption based on the valuation of my property, I just might as well sell my property because Rutland's not gonna be a place for me to live anymore. It's not gonna be the community that I l- that I move to.
But I think, I think we.
So that's just.
I think we need to.
You know what, I'm gonna, I'm, like, let's get this thing started. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the fifty fifty budget as the budget going forward to the finance committee. We have a motion on the table.
No, they don't. And we don't have services we had thirty years ago. They've never come back, ever.
Guys, 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 please.
We had more services thirty years ago.
We have a motion for the.
So what we're looking at for that one the most is a million dollar override.
Is there a second?
I don't hear a second on that one.
Well.
I'll second the motion only because it affected, you know, looking at this thing and looking at a million dollar override. And I know that there's two of us in this room who've got um, a lot of experience as far as the town is concerned and so, okay. We know what we're thinking, we know what we're saying and we know just how we feel about it, so. Okay, if you're gonna do something like a fifty fifty, then okay, I think that is worth a shot, I really do.
So we have a motion and a second, we can have additional discussion. Um, I would just wanna point out that we are a four-member board tonight, so um, anything that um, is a tie would fail. Um. So I still am really challenged with doing a fifty fifty. It's going to taxpayers and asking for any sort of increase in taxes and still saying that we are going to most likely cut services. Um, I think that coupled with the fact that then next year we are either depleting entirely our our free cash and or stabilization and starting off with a million dollars in the hole already, I think is horrible fiscal responsibility. Um, and something that I think Rutland historically has struggled with, um, not being honest with ourselves as to what it costs to live in the community that has this level of services. We have people knocking at our doors um, to move into town. Um, and because I think Austin had up our tax rate for the levels, our tax rate is on the lower side for central mass communities and for the level of services that we provide, it's even lower. Um, when all of that is taken into consideration. We hear a lot about surrounding communities that don't have um full-time firefighters, uh, fire departments, um, EMTs, ambulance, uh, police, um, not nearly as robust education system. Um, so all of these are are drivers that make a community, an attractive community. And if people are moving out, it's sending their property tax or their property values quite high. So the the amount of money that people are making um, on their houses, um, if they sell right now is generally uh, a quite high. Um, I've had many realtors say that they don't have any problem um, selling houses in in this community, um, regardless of what the tax.
Uh, if I might, I I don't know where this idea came from that we're not gonna have any money last year, next year. If we do the fifty fifty and we ask for a million dollars from the town, we're still gonna have one point three million dollars in cash and stabilization, not counting the O P E V money. So unless we're gonna go crazy and spend one point three million dollars during the year, we're gonna have money left.
I think to Leah's point, those should not be used to balance the budget. Those should be used for other town municipal projects and capital improvements.
And we know, if I'm, if I may, we have a snow and ice deficit this year that we're going to have to utilize free cash for. Um, a a one million dollar cut over or cut budget, any cut budget is going to reduce our free cash for the following year because everything is going to be budgeted even more down to the penny. It's in our financial policies that we approved last year, um, that there is a mechanism to try to provide some opportunity for free cash, not not a ballooned amount. Um, we are well on the low end of the recommendations per our fiscal policies. Um, and that that money is utilized, we had what, a thirty thousand dollar, fifty thousand dollar repair at the building on Glenwood um, that was unexpected, that um, our buildings are aging and any sort of um, and and a lot of our equipment, our D P W equipment especially, is aging. Um, so any of these repairs are significant. Um, so that's.
If I might, the board seemed to be at a stalemate. I'd like to move the motion.
Motion and a second for the one million dollar, uh, one point one million dollar cut over a budget with a one point one million dollar um, additional funding source.
We already, Paul and I already voted. So moving the motion means we gotta finish the motion. You gotta vote.
Uh, no, we need a roll call vote. You, maybe, you can move the vote, you can move, make a motion and a second, that doesn't guarantee a an affirmative vote.
Yeah. I'm not saying it does. I'm just saying, we had a vote, Paul and I voted, we had more discussion.
No, you made a motion and a second.
You made a motion.
I'm sorry, I made a motion, you're right.
And that's what I'm saying, you made a motion and a motion and a second does not automatically result in a an affirmative vote for either.
Right, but I wanna move the motion.
And I understand that.
Okay.
So, and I was just reiterating what the motion was.
Okay.
Roll call, Harry.
Sec- for the fifty fifty, segment I.
That's a N.
Ladrean A.
Waitman I. Um, I think we're gonna be at a standstill because my consents, my read on the board is if we um, do put for a two point two million dollar override um, to fund the entire amount, that it's going to be result in the same um, two, two, two vote. Um. I, we could have eh, the additional discussion.
Hey, can I ask you a question? Do we know if Tom is gonna eh be able to attend either of the two meetings?
Yes, he'll be here for one of them.
Okay.
Okay.
I was gonna, I thought.
Just trying to preemptively think if if we're just gonna continue the same scenario to another night.
Right, right, right. Um, do you, I'm not sure what night he can attend, do you know? I don't know what night he can attend.
Wednesday.
It is Wednesday. Um, so I don't know if the f- board, um, and wants to start our meeting at five thirty to have this conversation with a full member, if Tom's able to to attend before FinCom, I think FinCom and the department heads were hoping to have a a plan after tonight's meeting. Um. But I. Yeah. Um, action items, we can continue uh for wages, um, I.
Can I make in a suggestion? Just like you said, you can't, because somebody had made the motion to, seconded the motion to move forward with the cut. Should you still have a vote on the the original two point two? And because you haven't voted on that yet.
Yeah.
I I would strongly encourage that.
Is there a motion, uh, well, is there any other motion? It could be for the two point two million dollar cut or the two point two million dollar override?
I'll make a motion to move forward with the two point two million dollar override for fiscal year twenty-six.
Is there a second? I will second it for consideration, for conversation. Um, I said my piece during the the previous, I have a really hard time going to anyone asking for any amount of additional funding when it's not going to put us in, it's going to continue to perpetuate the hole that we're in. Um, and if we're going to have to do any sort of advocacy, I would rather advocacy, advocate for putting us in a more sound financial position, not just this year, but next year and beyond as well.
Hmm, I echo Leah's sentiments and like you said, I, it needs to go to the town. The town needs to vote on it and they need to decide whether they're willing to do it.
Any conversation from?
I said my piece.
For the two point two million dollar override.
Second, second N.
That's a N.
Ladrean I.
Waitman I. Um. Should we vote on the two point two million dollar cut budget? Um, I think everyone agrees that that's decimating the town. Um, but that's, we have that because if no override passes, that's where we are.
Is this where we're at if we don't come to a consensus on?
Uh, honestly, through the chair, I don't think we need to vote on a slash and burn. Eh eh, if it, if it doesn't get voted, it's gonna happen. So it's not something we have to vote on for a position.
Um, we do have some action items policy-wise. Austin, I know it's not helpful in the sense that you don't know where the budget is number is looking like for your bottom line, but this at least can provide.
I don't know if it's relevant, with I, with all the respect to the board, I what budget are you talking about wages and what budget are you talking about level of services? So I I don't know what a discussion, what budget that would, those decisions would inform, that it.
These were.
We don't have a budget.
These were my requests because of looking at the cut budget. I was seeing a lot of inequities between the wages that were uh, in the budget and wanted to have the discussion on what are the priorities as far as departments for cut budgets? Because if we're going to, we need, in my opinion, if we have a cut budget, we need to prioritize departments that will be bringing in revenue to the town and the cuts need to be made accordingly to ensure that those departments continue to operate. And but, and additional cuts should be made in other non-essential departments. That's where I was going with with this topic.
No, and I appreciate that and I think that's, but it, we, we haven't supported anything, so we can't even talk about modifying something, so. I don't even know what to modify because I haven't gotten any direction from the board here.
Um, for the fiscal year twenty-five budget discussion, I think, um, knowing that we don't piggybacking on this most recent discussion, not knowing where we stand with the twenty-six budget um, for twenty-five, um, I think Austin was looking for some um, support to ask uh, departments um, to kind of uh, free spending eh eh, except non-essential spending, is that?
Well, so, uh, yeah, this discussion also came up, um, with Jen talking just overall about, overall about spending. Um, this was a request to include this on the agenda. Um, one of the challenges that we have overall just from spending, um, even aside from having a challenging budget year is um, you know, we we don't have a lot of internal controls for spending. Um, one of the things that I found actually from Margaret when she was town administrator, it was actually a po- a policy and procedure put in place um, for purchasing, requiring purchase orders for expenses over a thousand dollars. There were some exceptions as well that were included in that policy. So for example, it would, it would not include our monthly or regular utility invoices, um, payments for gas and diesel deliveries, payments for uh, contracts already executed and signed, emergency purposes, so for example, like medical supplies for the ambulance, uh, or other emergency supplies, legal invoices, um, uh, oil deliveries for salt, um, water and sewer materials, sand, things like that for highways. And then also our debt service, our payroll and our employee, employee benefits. Um, so this policy is is in place from a couple years ago. It obviously hasn't been enforced since twenty seventeen. Um, so just something to consider and and especially as um, our fiscal outlook is uncertain at this time for next year. Um, this could be a tool for um, uh, for me and the town accountant to kinda not stop, but maybe slow down spending a little bit to try to force a turn back, um, to preserve as much cash as possible for future years. And I do agree with the, uh, we looked at um, the dollar threshold, we 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 said, do we go lower, do we go higher? A thousand dollars seems to be, um, you know, a decent, it would apply to three or four purchases, I think, on the most recent warrant, um, including the exceptions and things like that. Um, we've done a sort of a similar process, starting with last year's budget, um, where we are authorizing departments to transfer in between their line items, um, subject to the authority of uh, an approval of me and the town accountant. Um, there were a couple of departments last year that submitted a a transfer request and we either denied it or we lowered the request based off of what we thought was appropriate um, for an end of the year, mid-year transfer. So we're kind of doing it already, but one of the challenges, I think we've, I've expressed this um, to members as well is, you know, here's your warrant, this big thick document here. These purchases have already taken place, so we really don't have any authority um, to control spending once it's, you know, we already got paid, we got paid last week, Monday, technically, technically. Um, and we've already, um, pretty much printed the checks to send to all these vendors. So this, your approval tonight is more of a ceremonial thing anyways, so. Just something for the board to discuss if you'd like to move forward with.
I mean, I think the policy already exists and.
I was just gonna say, if you already have one.
So, um.
Yeah, well, maybe we just really have some sort of a recent vote, I mean, that was eight years ago at this point. This was August first of, um, of twenty seventeen that this was put in place.
So like an update vote, just to review and update?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's been iterations of a town administrator, I think, so just to kind of,
Yeah, yeah.
um, obviously iterations of a board, that was before any of us were on the board, so, um.
And the process would look, would would work, but you know, I I don't think we're looking to make any changes to the form, so most departments are actually already familiar with the form that that took place, so they submit the relevant documentation for the purchase. Um, and then we actually already have functionality uh, with our current accounting system to book these in our accounting system, so you would then also see the purchase orders um, encumbered on your budget reports, so you could also see the level of um, spending there as well.
Track commitments.
Do you want a motion for that?
To, do you, I mean. To do, I mean, is the board, does the board support that? We can have a motion, that's fine, um.
Uh it's up to you, I I if we already have a policy, I would like to see that policy come back to the forefront and be enforced
Right, adhere.
and adhered adhere to, I'd like to start seeing, given the what we're looking at. I think additional oversight is warranted.
Um. I think Austin, you have the authority to enforce that, do you want we if we I'll take a motion.
Uh yeah, if we want it on the record, I'll I'll make a motion to ensure that, what's the title of our policy?
Purchasing.
Purchasing policy. Existing purchasing policy is utilized by our town administrator, utilized and enforced by our town administrator.
Do we have enforcement on that, Austin? Is there enforcement on that? I mean, if you say somebody don't do it and they do it, then what's the enforcement?
Would probably would be included on the warrant.
It wouldn't, okay. So even though they want the vendor paid, the vendor won't be paid, we don't do it, okay. Okay.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other conversation? We'll call Harry.
Second eye.
Next thing there.
Ledry, Whiteman eyes. Thank you. Um I believe that's the business of the agenda, are there any other future agenda requests? Obviously, we still need to figure out the budget. Name an address.
Sherry, hey, everyone, Olivia Lane, I would just like some clarification on the next steps for the budget. It seems to me from what I've heard tonight that you are going to move forward with possibly an early meeting on the same day as the planning board is supposed to be looking to recommend. And it doesn't seem to me that that gives them adequate time with whatever budget you choose to uh be prepared for the department meetings. So it from my perspective, I would hope that you would cancel the FinCom meeting on Wednesday. Get straightened however the budget is going to be and then at least give them a minimum of a day to start to review it before they start meeting with the departments. But if you all can explain to me it how you think it's gonna work that way.
I wish I had a crystal ball, Sherry. Um we need to come up with something and it seems that it's this board is currently as a four-member board, very polarized as far as the the tra- traject- financial trajectory of town. Um and so I I don't I I will have some s- some struggling to do with myself to it to try to come around to anything other than what I think is in the absolute best interest of town and the amount of advocacy that's gonna take no matter what um to do that for me personally. Um I honestly have no idea um where Tom Tom would be considering anything, I know he was in favor of seeing what a a split a fifty fifty split budget was, but I don't know what his his take on that would be.
I'm I'm not really asking where I where you where you all think the budget's gonna end up.
Yep.
I truly just wanna know the actual procedure of what will happen on Wednesday. Because if you take a vote at five thirty and then FinCom is going to try and review and have appropriate questions and be ready for a six o'clock meeting. That's not fair to them, it's not fair to the public. It's not right, it's not transparent because there was not enough warning given or notice given, not warning.
And I think I I think where we are right now, we've already delayed this meeting with FinCom and department heads because the board had requested a fifty fifty split budget instead of um a an an override budget, a full override budget and a cut budget. Um so I almost am of the mindset based on the comments tonight also that even though the bylaw very much puts um the the budget in the laps of the administrator and select board for these policy decisions um that we have the the three budget conversation with the department heads and FinComs and and FinCom and it is confusing. And time um intensive as that's going to be, I I don't see any other um avenue at this point, I I'm not sure, you you know, school committee budget is coming up very quickly. Also, um you I think are voting next week, I think um or have the the public hearing for um and potentially the votes, depending on how the public hearing goes. Um so we know we have town meeting coming up and if we have any ballot questions um from the town side, we need to submit them to the town clerk's office by um the middle of or the beginning of April. Um obviously, this has also derailed all of our select board goals and objectives. Um town administrators' goals and obstr- and objectives, staff's goals and objectives because it's um quite a a tumultuous time to be an employee in town, not knowing um having any direction and constantly having um the direction change. So I acknowledge that and I feel that and I also currently cannot in good conscience recommend something that would be setting us back um financially for me personally. Name an address.
Gene Sigliano Suci Drive, is the one half budget, is every line just cut in half?
No.
Or or some so.
Well, just about, right, I mean, that's not fair to say.
Sure.
So um one of the things that I feedback from the board was I also included community television in the cut. Um so we I that which wasn't included in the original cut budget, so I heard some feedback from the board.
Right, sure, right.
Um but just about, I mean, it's not quite fifty percent because the numbers have also changed or deficit um has also changed, but we went from a um you know, two point one million to about a one point one million dollar cut budget. Um and what we did is proportionally took the reductions.
That's right, so it was proportional, it wasn't say cut this position entirely and keep the rest of the department there.
Right, so with both with both cuts, we took we took the cut needed, so two point one and one point one.
There was nothing uh a.
And then we took the the department's proportional share of the budget and they said um alright, your proportional share, let's say for example, police department was twenty five percent of the budget, you were twenty five percent of the cut.
So 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 would some departments have chosen to eliminate a whole position and solve the cut right there and keep everything else the same?
Yeah, so so.
So we would have to look at it to see that.
Yes, correct.
So is there a way to show the budget side by side? The 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 instead of having, cause I looked online and there's the three different budgets and you gotta keep flipping pages.
So like the overview document that we have that shows uh yeah, let me see if I can.
All the lines and it says, here's the one whatever, I I had a one percent budget or whatever, whatever you're calling them. The hairy budget and the other budget.
Sorry.
Um and and put them side by side and put them side by side and then you can look at them.
They're all hairy. Um so you mean kinda this this spread?
Cause I can't see anything up there.
Yeah, I know, it's coming up, sorry. Um so this spreadsheet, is this what you're talking about? So adding another column that has the, so this is currently the one point one.
Oh sorry, sorry.
This is currently the one point one uh million cut budget, so.
And where's the the two and a half over budget?
So that's a that's a set, well, so this would be the two and a half million dollar override budget, so this was the initial.
So they are side, they are side by side.
Right, right.
So so you can see if they if if discretionary cuts are made versus arbitrary, everything cut in half or quite proportionally.
Right, right.
Yeah, well, so we we told the department, we gave the department, we said, for example, um you know, for for my budget, I had to cut um just about fifty some odd thousand dollars. So then I looked at my budget and the select board's budget and I and I identified the cuts for various line items. Every department had a certain number that they needed to reduce their budget request by um which in they had the authority to decide what their cut budget would look like.
Their request, then there's the cut budget, where's the half cut budget?
This is the half cut budget right here.
So then where's the full cut budget or that we're not doing that?
That's a that's that's a separate spreadsheet, cause we've got a million budgets right now, yeah, but I but what, you know, if.
Alright, alright, so we don't need that. So these are the two that are being considered basically by the board.
No, there's three, right, there's the full cut, there's the original one.
We would the time to extend that already.
Right, 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 so these are the two, correct.
Well, if nothing if nothing happens, then.
If nothing happens, that's what we do.
Right. But if if Wednesday night, they look at both of these and pick one, basically.
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah, or they could pick one tonight.
They can't.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um.
Unless there was a motion to reconsider.
Yeah.
Which I think based on this board tonight is.
Well, I don't, actually a reconsider wouldn't work because it needs to be from I think the majority, right, and there was no majority.
Right, question for majority.
Right.
I don't know.
This is a very secret.
I don't know.
Uh-huh.
Rob its roles, but that was the rationale for how we did both of the the large cut and the half and half cut.
And that's online?
Yes, this is online, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And is income on there too?
Um
Revenue?
No, no, this is just a budget document. The revenue um is included, um I also have an updated model on the website, so it would be this spreadsheet, that's included on the website under the multi year.
I might email you for links if I can find.
Okay, alright, I have to.
Um so and then if the assessments have all gone up, that means i- if if the rate is fourteen dollars a thousand and all the assessments have gone up, is that added revenue already considered in the revenue part of the budget?
Um so no, so that would be assessments, they take a look at the overall uh assessments and then they take a look at how much we are levying and that's how we get to a tax rate and that's how you get to your tax bill. So we because we have not gone through the tax recap and 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 set the tax rate for next year, we we don't have assessed values for next year yet either, right, so we kind of run off of what our current assessed values are.
But if they all go up.
So so that's not new, that that's not new revenue. The new revenue is right here, oh sorry, that's a different spreadsheet now, good lord, sorry, I've got a million spreadsheets.
But can I clarify something?
Yep.
With that, with the assessed values going up, we still are limited at our two and a half.
Correct.
Yep.
percent, so we have to adjust our tax rate to not go over that, so yes, there will be increases, but
Yep.
we're not, it's not like we're saying your house increased in value two hundred thousand, we're not gonna collect X number
Yeah.
percentage more.
Yeah, we don't get to, if it increases two hundred thousand, we don't get two hundred thousand of revenue off it, right, we get uh it's based off of the tax rate, right.
Right, exactly.
It's still proportionate.
I think that is key, that is a very, very key point that, for example, some in the room did not understand, including myself.
Yes. Right.
So.
Your tax rate is gonna be adjusted to cap it at that two and a half.
So generally, the way it works is if if values in
I did not know.
No, we're raising rent, we're raising rent.
No, it's not true.
If, hold on, so if if values increase higher than the budget spend, your tax rate goes down.
It is worth it.
That's true, we're working on it. Let the let the man speak that knows, please.
Right, so if if property values increase uh more than our budget spend, the tax rate goes down. And it it's vice versa, right, if if our budget spend is higher than the assessment increase, then our tax rate goes up. That's why you've seen, if you look at the history of our tax rate, we've kinda fluctuated a little bit, depending on what budget spend is and where
It goes up and down.
And if you look at the the tax rate on the the Cape communities or the island communities, they have some of the lowest tax rates in the state
Sorry.
because their property value is so high, so they have
Their property values are so high. So that will just go, yeah.
They have twenty million dollar homes, so they have a seven dollar
They pay more in town.
Yeah.
tax rate or or even less.
Right.
Um but.
So your your tax rate is still only able to go up two and a half percent based on your assessed value, we still can't tax any higher than that without the over actual secondary override.
Right.
Well, there's no there's no loophole there for you to jack up the rates by ten per, you know, taxes by ten percent.
No.
No, but if your house goes, if your house goes up in value by a hundred thousand,
No.
Right.
you get taxed on that extra hundred thousand regardless of what the rate is.
You should be.
Correct.
So that taxes going up.
We should, right. Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
However, now we add two and a half on top of that because we had to tax you on the increased value, now you get two and a half percent on the overall value on top of that.
Right.
Yeah.
That was right, that was the point I was making.
So it's not like your tax, just cause the tax rate goes down, doesn't mean your taxes go down.
No, that's not what I'm trying to say, so so and and the original question was, was that math, is that math in there?
Right, no, no.
Right, no. But we still still know.
And the original question was, was that math, is that math in there, so the revenues are going up by more than two and a half percent from property taxes?
No, your assessment has gone up, so your taxes have gone up.
No.
Still can't take any more than two and a half, I said.
Also, the on taxes, they do go up a little bit more, right, so to to answer your question, right, so this is this is how our levy limit is calculated, right, so it takes um so this is our current um levy limit at twenty one point seven million dollars, right? That then becomes the base of next year's levy limit. On that base, you get two and a half percent, which this is automatic, this is a formula, right, this is automatically calculated. Then we get new growth, so that's new construction, right? Um so we considerably are budgeting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new growth for next year and this becomes your new base for taxes. They then add excluded debt, which is added to the levy, right, so that's six hundred and forty six thousand dollars and this is the net levy, right? So this is our total um taxation, right? We then um divide that amongst the assessed value of the community and that's where you get to your tax rate, right?
So the new assessment, the the increased assessment does not play a role in your ability to increase by two and a half by you you're still pegged at the two and a half.
Correct, yeah, it's just on levy, right.
Yeah.
Just on levy.
Yep. Yep.
And I think that's a very important point to distinguish, right, cause that was not clear to me.
And and so what happened, and I'll unhide FY twenty four, is you can see our our base from the prior year was seventeen point nine million. So what did we do, right, we added and you see the formula there, we added two, I mean, it's too small, but we added two million dollars. So that got added, that was a two million dollar override, right? We added two million to the base, that then becomes your new base and two and a half percent grows on that now, right?
So I think in the end, right, you've got a structural problem.
Yes. Right.
And I think the better and more thoroughly we communicate that structural problem, the more successful we'll be as a town long term. And I don't think doing a fifty fifty budget and like making a a or or make cutting a half inch cut into your hand versus a one inch cut in your hand is really gonna make gonna help that messaging going forward. So you have a structural problem, solve the str- structural problem.
And.
Yeah, there's your structural deficit right here, this white space, right?
Right. This isn't gonna get any easier and so like you have to communicate that, it's just it's 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 a really tough nut to crack.
Yeah, if I may, I um I have a lot of concerns that the longer we keep volleying this back and forth, we just keep losing time to educate the residents. And I think we have um a very small percentage from the outgoing of gaining support on an override. So if we don't even have the opportunity to educate residents because we can't come to a decision, that decision will mean nothing, cause we're gonna have the cuts.
Yep.
I agree, but that's assuming we push for two and a half million dollars of extra tax money from our citizens and we're assuming that they want it.
We have to give them the opportunity to ask, to vote on it, it's not us to decide.
Right. Well, we have to give them an opportunity on the fifty fifty if they want it too. What I'm saying is, we try to be as transparent as we can with the town. Telling them, here's what we've done. We've tried to balance and this is the hard part. You know, as a board, our job is to use data, logic and facts when it comes to making a decision. And as long as we have data that says town didn't go for a big, town didn't even go for a small override on CPA the last time. Now we're gonna ask them for a big override? There are like Mike said, there are many people out there who can, yeah, you
That's different.
I know people in town that make a half million dollars, okay, Corbin, they can afford it. But if you're making thirty thousand dollars a year between a pension and Social Security or thirty five, five hundred bucks extra to you is a lot of money, a lot of money.
Then and if I may, then then this town needs to come to a consensus on how we can operate on a significantly cut service level and it needs to stay that way because this this town has not we just got in and got back up to a level of service that was expected and if we're just gonna turn around two years later and cut it all, we can't keep flip flopping. We need to pick it and and decide to essentially live within our means and if this town is not willing to come to the table and what, there's nothing we can do about it, that our our ta- our revenues come from property taxes, yes, it's a burden on the residents. Yes, we are trying to do things to help make that better, but for the foreseeable future, it is what it is. And if the town is not willing to put forward the additional money to retain the existing level of services, then there needs to be some agreement on leveling, getting rid of whatever we're not willing to pay for and it needs to stay that way until the town can consistently pull in revenue to to pay for it.
And I think we can to piggyback on that, Jen, we can decide, okay, we're only going to tax to what the the lowest income earners in town can can afford or we can tax to the level of services that that the community is is accustomed to, and and that benefits everyone, um, we, the, unfortunately, the cost of everything is going up. Um, I can't sit here and in good faith say that I'm advocating to make town better because that's something that I strong, very strongly believe I'm here to do is to make town better and then put us on a fiscally irresponsible, in my opinion, path. Um, and like I said, I will have a lot of of grappling to do with that because it's all gonna take advocacy and I would rather advocate to keep us on a um, a healthy and sustainable uh track. We have Corinne, then Jean, then Mike.
Yeah.
Coming, Buliefko, I think with this education, educating the public, I think we have to educate them to the fact that we need this. It it's a, and I I I mean, I'm a senior citizen, I'm I I have got retirement. You know, I I don't wanna spend more money, but, and I said this at the last town meeting, when I dial nine one one, I want the ambulance to show up. When we have the ice storms, I wanna be out, get out of my driveway and drive on the highways, uh because they're sanded. I mean, there's just, we've become accustomed to having these services, and then to cut them all is 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 gonna be devastating.
And and the reason why, if I may, that's a jump in, but the reason why I can't I can't get on board with the fifty fifty is again, we're gonna have a three million next year, so if we cut half a million in town services this year, if another override doesn't pass, now we're cut, now we're stuck with cutting three million out of town services, we're 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 gonna completely decimate. And there's not gonna be anything.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's.
Mike, and then Jean.
And I would truthfully, it's tough, we're faced with tough decisions. Like, uh, it was tried, my whole point was that I was trying to tell and say to him, is you're right, two and a half is a certain point. The assessed values, that's what hurt this year, okay? 'Cause no matter what, the taxes already went up before we did anything else. Depending on how you value your property, so we're already facing that increase, that's there no matter what. Now we added two and a half, and you're absolutely right, it is the people's choice, and I think it has to go to the ballot. The point I was just trying to make is to try to do the lesser value because I really think it's gonna be tough to get an override passed in the town, that was the point I was gonna make. And I think the higher you go, the tougher the chance, the lower go, like say with the fifty fifty, that was the point I was making, maybe that's easier than going to a big one, but we are still facing tougher, and that's, that was the point I was trying to make.
I just, one of the feedback, some of the feedback that we got was the override a couple years ago, was with the projections that we just talked about were inaccurate projections, it was projected to last longer, last longer than it did. The the numbers and the percentages that we were working off of were not by any means accurate, and we now have staff in place who are utilizing more um robust numbers for those projections. Some of the feedback we have, I've gotten a lot of, if you're gonna go for a two million, if you're gonna go for a one million dollar override, go for the seven, that's gonna last us longer.
That's right.
I think it's, I I hear on the other side, the the fixed income folks, no matter what, and and I'm gonna push back, even the people who are making five hundred thousand dollars, we don't know what their economic situation is, and it may not be any easier for them to afford than someone on fixed income. Um, because I think that we make a lot of assumptions and we don't know what everyone's personal situations are. Um, but I I have heard, as much as I have heard, we can't afford anything, if we're gonna do something, why not go longer rather than go for one or two million dollars this year and next year need another one or two million dollars, and the year after need one or two million dollars? We took those longer term ones off the table from the get go, um, or very early because this board can't even decide on a one or a two million dollar, um, right, so those came off, um, early.
I think a lot of times too, though, people make decisions where they look at affording their own house and their own bills, and they'll take the bud, they'll take the cuts in order to survive, excuse me. I I'm just saying, not everybody, I'm just saying there are a lot of people who do that, and I don't think you wanna see also people pushed out of town and have to sell their house, that's that's all I'm saying. It's a tough call either way, and it is up to the people, that's, it is their choice.
Jean, did you have anything?
At town meeting, any of this could change, right? Can someone amend it?
I mean, there's always the option to have amendments at town meeting on the budget, um.
Yeah, so, but generally on town meeting, you you can only decrease, you can't increase in appropriation, because you, especially, for example, you couldn't increase the budget by two million dollars.
You can't put a two and a half override on the on the.
Right. Right, right, so we'd have to have the select board for ballot question by uh April month.
So, so. So the. If the two, if the two and a half override was at town meeting, could someone amend it to one and a half?
So I think no matter what, the override, the ballot would be, the ballot would already be printed to say whatever the ballot, so if the ballot, because anything above uh the two and a half has to go to the ballot, so it has to be, it has to pass at town meeting, the budget with those numbers has to pass at town meeting, but then the funding source, which would be anything above and beyond the two and a half, has to be approved at the ballot, um. If hypothetically, if the board were to put a seven million dollar override, then we could have the option to tax only to the capacity that we needed, correct, Austin?
Yeah, so in your budget, you know, you could, depending on how much you appropriate, right, so if your if your budget for this year didn't appropriate the full, for example, seven million, um that wouldn't be reflected in your tax bills, right?
But.
That makes sense.
Yeah. So.
But, but, you know, I I think the for example, the five and the seven million, um, the model that I presented, and I'll bring it up just to show people again, had what was called an override stabilization fund, right, so, um it took, and I recognize this is a lot of numbers here, right, but, um, it did a seven million dollar override and transferred, um the first year four point seven, the second year two point nine, one point three, and two, what's called an override stabilization fund, and the idea is to make those dollars last more, right, so then you get.
You collect them and they collect interest and.
Yep. And that gets you, you know, for example, the seven million based off of my assumptions would get us um at least six years, and after six years in the override stabilization fund, you would still have two point one million dollars um in the stabilization fund. You know, I also presented the board a five million dollar override and what that looks like. Um, I've gotta tweak these numbers, but, um, because this doesn't reflect with the schools, but that would have um, that lasted, when I presented this to the board, about four years worth.
That, that wasn't really what I was asking, though, I just wanted to know the process at town meeting, if the two and a half was on the ballot,
Yep.
could someone amend it to one and a half or whatever?
No.
No.
You can't.
You can't amend the ballot question.
So. Yeah, so.
I mean, if it's on the warrant, I'm using the wrong word.
So, town meeting appropriates money, the ballot question is the necessary function to increase the levy. Um, so you need a a successful ballot vote to increase the levy.
So if.
There's not a warrant article to say
Correct.
will the town vote for a two and a half override?
Oh, it's not a warrant?
It usually just says contingent upon
Yeah.
um, a successful or whatever, perhaps two and a half override ballot question.
Right. Carol, I saw your hand, and Michelle, I saw your hand.
I I I keep seeing a big elephant, um, whether it's no override or two and a half or five or seven, even if it was a seven, at the end of six years, we're gonna be looking at another seven million dollar plus another probably inflation on top of that, to go back to Mister Habers, it, we've got a structural problem. We have a two and a half guaranteed raise every year, and we never look at anything less than that, and I understand that that's you know, there's other things, do we look at, there's different tax rates for people that are under sixty five or over sixty five or seventy? Are there other things that we can do because we just, the can keeps getting bigger that we're kicking down the front.
And I think that that was some of the conversation I know I've had with Austin, but because the board was for the longer, for the bigger slash longer overrides, especially like looking at the seven million dollar that still had a some money in the stabilization fund, we had talked about this, right, on the board previously with the override, their way to create a fund to help individuals who are are truly, truly struggling, to help them stay in their their home above and beyond the tax work at, work off program and and stuff, um, when we have, but with this, these numbers right now that we're considering a one point one a one point one or a two point two, there's just not, not that amount of of room, and and.
And and, and I know, I've been on the other side of the desk and and it's a, it's a really, it's a tough place to be,
Right.
but you know, when we keep having six, seven, eight percent increases every year, we're never going to achieve what
Right.
we're all hoping for.
And. I will say this, I I wanna say this school administration is very, very keen on advoc- advocacy at the state, which the previous was not. I was disappointed at the budget roundtable this past week, um, we had our state legislatures there, representation from our state legislators, um, and all three of them, we have two representatives and a senator, um, all three of them got up at eight o'clock and left before the towns had any opportunity to have any conversation. Um, so that was really disheartening to to see that that our state legislature, our our state representation didn't wanna hear from the towns, um.
And I've done, I I've I've done a lot of re, looking at the budget this this past couple of weeks in in seeing though, I I was the one that was always saying, what is the school doing? But first of all, Wachusett's nowhere near the increase that Bay Path is, so there's that. And then I was looking at, if I take out the education from our budget, the town is just as bad. So, eh, we've got a triple whammy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, I I've stopped yelling under my breath at the school because the town of Rutland is just is at fault
Yep.
for the increases.
And this year, we, eh, Wachusett felt it, across the, the entire state has felt it, we've gotten slammed with health insurance and, well, insurance in general and retirement has gone up, I think in Rutland, um quite high, we're a high risk community, so, but even the schools, it tends to be a lower pool, um, their provider bumped them up because even though they're a low risk pool, um, they got bumped up because they needed more money.
And I think, I mean, the the state has mutated things for the, for the districts, and they're unfundable, so.
She doesn't have enough money.
Right, and so, but I think we as a community, um, the schools are, the school is very much more amenable now than previous to do advocacy at the state level, I think we as a community need to continue to do the ag- advocacy at the state level to continue to fund UGA, there was MMA put forth some, um uh resolutions that UGA should increase more than the minimum local contribution for the schools increase, um is UGA's unrestricted local government aid, um, and then, um, they've continued to do some work for the pilot agreements. We know about fifty percent of our land in town is owned by the state, and the amount of money that we get in that is
We got, yeah.
for that is, um, poultry, um, and so they're continuing to do some of that advocacy, um, MMA is as well, um it's not, none of it's gonna be a ban, like, none of it's gonna be a fix, it's gonna help us a little bit, same with the economic development piece, the it, the, have been through that rigmarole, we're still continuing to try to find businesses, um and avenues to to bring business in, so I appreciate that, Carol, I Michelle, did you have something?
I'll defer to.
Yeah, so, I think that the tracks for what the, for what we're on now were probably set, I don't know, ten years ago, with the single family home boom that, I mean, of, you know, property living, one of.
I just have one more climate, just we just go with the lowest budget, we're gonna solve, we're not, we're gonna have plenty of money, and we're gonna solve the the building problem, 'cause nobody wanna move here, so we will, so there won't be any more growth, so.
Corinne, Corinne's managed growth plan.
Okay, slashing vertiges.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Good night.
My my point was really that, you know, we we set these tracks ten, fifteen years ago. So, one of the reasons to go for something like a forward-looking budget like that is seven years out, is that now you can then redirect the tracks for what they're gonna be like seven years from now, right? You can say like, okay, we need, over the next seven years, we gotta put in three or four retirement communities, right, we gotta do some of those things because you'll have seven years to react. And you can set the tracks in a slightly different direction, whereas right now, it's year to year, and you you're not able to lay out any kind of vision whatsoever.
And I I appreciate that, it's also exhausting from a board member's perspective, I can only imagine from the staff perspective
For sure.
that I feel like we have this conversa, as soon as May comes, we're gonna be back to this conversation for next year. Um, and it makes any sort of goals and objectives, planning, we made a commitment when we did our goals and objectives last summer, um, that there's a cost to this and we need to be willing to do the advocacy to 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 incorporate this into the budget, and and here we are, um, so I think that that's, like, to your point, we're in this vicious cycle of just continuing to do, um because it's what we did.
I I guess I have a question more of like, Paul and Harry, if you're against it, do you see a lot of fluff in the budget that really like, that we don't need? Like, I I think that that's really the bigger question, you know, when you see that difference, like, we've been chronically underfunded, right? And to bring us up to where we don't have to keep going for these overrides, and if you put some money away and we're earning interest on the on the override from now, and we can kind of have it last us for a few years. But I guess the bigger question is, do you really see that the budget is that padded, or that departments are asking for way so so much more money than what they need? That we, that it makes it sense to cut it, do you know what I'm asking?
Neither, well.
Either one of both of you, yeah, I guess, but 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 Harry, you were the first one to make that comment, though.
Yeah.
But do you really think that that the departments are asking for so much that's, that it's unreasonable?
I don't, personally, I don't think there's fluff there.
Right.
What I do think is that the, some departments have overgrown their salaries and benefits greater than what the town is capable of doing. That's my concern. So if we keep growing at that rate, we're, I don't even know if a seven million dollar budget will be an issue, we'll be able to handle the problem going forward.
But then, but then why don't you target those budgets and just like deal with, deal with what you think is overblown? Right, to to make cuts, like specific cuts like that, so rather than letting a couple of budgets that you think are overgrown and saying, okay, everybody just cut fifty percent, why don't you target those budgets for cuts to to make it so that everything else, you you know what I, you know what I'm saying?
I do, but that's not what we do.
But why don't you do that, because isn't that the job?
Good, good question, because that gets into a line-by-line item.
Yep. Well, not necessarily, Harry, that's again, a policy decision, so, I don't know if you wanna call out the department that you think has grown too big, but if you did,
And we don't do that.
you can say, I think X department has grown too big, and as a policy goal, I think that we wanna reorganize the department's structure and and provide
Yes.
uh a recommendation for a level of services that needs to be provided, that's well within the authority of the board. Now, yes, I don't think that means that you're gonna say that X department only has a two thousand dollar supplies budget, but again, it's the high level, big picture, what the board talks about is what services are we providing to the community, um, and then we build a budget that's responsive to that.
And that will prob, that could happen in the future, but right now, you can't, we're not there. We we are not there.
Especially, I think that this is the time to be talking about that, I mean, I brought this up to Austin where, you know, we're talking about a combined rec senior center facility, why can't we have a discussion about starting to combine the council on aging with the recreation department into a human services department and bring the council on aging into somehow being part of the recreations revolving budget to pay for programming out of there versus the general fund? These are the types of things that.
I'm saying. I'm saying that's that's a great future item, but can we get that done before we?
Oh, no, not for right now, but.
That's what I'm saying, we can't do anything right now, so as future, yes, we can look at stuff like that, but not now.
Right. Yes.
But I think Mike, one of the challenges I see is when we are go going year to year with a structural deficit year to year or barely making it year to year, that we don't have time to have those in-depth conversations
Right, yes.
because then it turns automatically into a we need to worry about uh what the budget's gonna look like for next year. Um and and if you get rid of some of these structural deficits, right?
So if you if you we pass the override and then you look at this and you say, hey, if we can combine this and have more efficiency, wouldn't that then extend instead of five years or six years out, it might extend that override to seven or eight? But I think you need the seed money to be able to have the conversation and then you you can look at.
And.
And Michelle, I agree, that that's a conversation that the next board has to have.
Right, but I think for now.
Not this board, because right now, we've got a crisis, a structural crisis, in which budget are we gonna present?
But I think the structural crisis shows that we need the bigger budget to pass.
And will the town. Well, you gotta mind that you're you're betting on something, you're going to, to me, you're betting on something that may never happen. We're saying seven million is gonna be out there, we have no idea what's gonna happen. We have no idea if there's gonna be a crash in the market, a crash in the housing market, anything that that seven million won't actually last five or six years. So we're asking money, we're asking twenty five hundred dollars on top of your regular tax for one year with the promise that it may be there and we're asking the town to bet on our promise. I I can't even go there because I have to think about now. We've got a problem right now that we have to solve, can we look at the seven year next year? With five, yeah, but today, I I don't think the town's ready for that, personally, no.
I think I think we're overdue for it, Harry, I think we're overdue.
You you might be right, Michelle, but I just don't think the town is.
I think we are. I my last comment is gonna be, I'm I'm not opposed to a larger override, but in this as of right now, I agree with Harry, for this coming year, we are in no position to be able to offer and recommend a a seven million dollar budget because we have no plan for what we're gonna tell the residents, we're gonna do with it. The last thing I want is what happened with the last one where we say it's gonna last us for seven years and all of a sudden it's gone in two. So I'm perfectly fine with, you know, investigating that as an option for following years, but we need to have a plan for how that's going to pan out and we we have zero time to do that right now. For this current this, you know, to get something done for for May.
I'd like to uh thank you for the comments, but unless there's somebody else, I'd like to close the meeting.
Yeah. Sorry.
I just wanna make one last comment, is that I think sometimes people forget that um and I wish I had the exact number, a good portion of our staff are also residents in town.
Yeah.
Um and I think that this exercise that we go through every year where people fear that they're going to lose their jobs and they have to choose between, do I keep my job or do I increase my taxes? I think to go forward with a fifty fifty is telling those staff members, you're gonna increase your taxes and you're still potentially gonna get cut. So I I think to present that option even to the residents to say we're going to increase your taxes, albeit less than the two two million or two point two million, you're still saying we're going to increase your taxes and you're still gonna get cuts. And I just don't see what the benefit of that is to the residents when next year, we're gonna be in an even worse situation. That's just my opinion as a resident and a staff member.
I I think that's a great comment, but let me ask you, how will they feel if two and a half gets shut down and a lot of people lose their jobs?
Then that is what the voters will have decided.
Right, but you're saying that they're worrying about their position.
But.
Well, if two and a half does pass, it's not one or two people that may be worrying about it, it's a lot of people that worry about it.
I understand that, but.
And that's why I'm trying to be sensitive to the people who are yes, they're facing it, I I hey, I would not wanna be in that situation, I would not. So I'm trying to be sensitive to the town and the employees. And it's no quick fix, but anyways.
Don't you think that if you supported it, people would vote for it? If if the board if the board was unified in supporting it, I think people would vote for it, Harry.
If if that's right by your conscience, if you feel that's the right thing to do by your conscience, probably. But that's asking you not, they would they turn and say, hey, let's do if if they said everybody says fifty fifty and we push it as a board, would the town support it? Probably. So it's a it's a two-way street there, Michelle.
I know, but with the structural deficit, we keep kicking that can down the road.
We don't wanna kick it down the road, we wanna take care of.
No, that's why we want, that's why I'm thinking that you should, we should bring it up from now and carry it forward.
But there's no guarantee what's gonna happen next year.
But there never has been guarantee.
All we're doing is making promises, this year we understand what it is. I've been doing I've been doing financial planning and and working vis- for over thirty five years and I can tell you, there's no certainty out there. So we can say whatever we want, we can put whatever we want, but there is no, I'll go back to the nineteen eighties and the crash. So what I'm saying is, right now, we have a problem. Next year, we can look at what we need to do starting in May and we need to start in May and look at whether it's five, seven million, but we gotta take care of it this year, so.
But Harry, with all the respect I'm talking about right now and the the fifty fifty doesn't solve the problem either, it puts us in an even worse position than if we have a two and a half.
How does it put us in a worse position?
Because you're still cutting people, if we have a two and a half override or a two point two million dollar override and we pass it, we have no cuts. So now when we have to go make cuts next year, we're making cuts at a hundred percent of what we had versus next year, we're gonna be making cuts at fifty percent of what we have.
I understand, but you're you're basing it on the the certainty that two and a half will go through.
Well, you have a certainty, you're basing it on the certainty that the one one million will go through.
No, I'm not, I'm doing what I think the town will support. They could shoot that down and then ev- then more people will, so.
But you're one person, Harry.
You know, I I don't wanna get into a discussion of this or an argument about this, the board has a decision to make on it and I hear everybody. But I I don't wanna carry this on, so I think it.
One one final question, I just, cause I'm confused now. The fifty fifty, isn't that no override? Because isn't that using one million on the stabilization side and one million in cuts?
We're not sure.
So there's no override, so you're not sure, I'm just.
That's the flexibility for the decide, we haven't made that decision.
Because the other, no, the other one I know is a two and a half override, I'm just trying to confuse myself, cause now I'm a little confused. Because I know based on the two and a half, there's no guarantee that's gonna pass.
Right.
Where fifty fifty, if you use the half stabilization and only fifty cuts, you know, you can do that. You know, the override's no certainty, that's.
You're right, the proposal is a one million dollar override. In the fifty fifty, the proposal is a one million dollar override and one million dollars in cuts.
No, it's not, no, it's not, we haven't, we have not factored in, it was gonna, I said the option, it gives us options, I said that the last time.
No, it's not.
Is that trust what they voted on?
We can decide if we want the one million override or if we wanna use stabilization. That's still a board decision. So we haven't decided that, so again, I don't know where we are. And and somebody said earlier, I mean, I think it was using, uh come Wednesday, we make a decision, who's gonna have the time to evaluate that? I mean, we're we're in a no-win situation here and I think, Austin, I feel very bad for you, I really do.
Our next meetings are the fifth and sixth, we will hold them, I suppose, with department heads presenting all three budgets so that the board and FinCom can hear them. Is the what I sounded like this board wanted to have feedback from FinCom. FinCom I know had reached out to me today asking for guidance on a budget. Um and I said that I was hopeful that we would have that tonight. Um our regular scheduled meetings are Monday the seventeenth and Monday the thirty first. Um and March thirteenth is the budget meeting with the school districts um.
Question, Austin, have the department heads been told about what you've got as a projection here yet? Did they know this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the same that I s- I sent to the select board, um so department had until last Thursday to give me their um half cut budgets, um prepared it that night and sent it out on Friday to everyone. And you know, everyone's had the original budget and the mega cut budget since February. And I think at staff meeting this week, we uh was it this week or last week, I can't remember now.
Understand.
Yeah, no, it was last week.
Um you know, I think we expressed the the goal that the board would also make a decision as well, so.
Um is there any other business to come before the board? I would entertain a motion.
Second.